Okay, I will call the meeting to order. The regular Board Meeting of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees, April 16th. I have two cards for public comment. The first, Mr. Paul, Aaron Paul, we'll call you to the podium here, please, and you'll speak into the microphone because you're being recorded and videoed.
Please make sure you get my good side.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
And three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you for all that you do for this community through the support and oversight you provide to Tarrant County College. My name is Aaron Paul. I'm a Michigander by birth, Texan by the grace of God, we've been here for six years. Graduated from the University of Michigan with my Bachelor in Science degree in 2007 and have worked for Advanced Technologies for the past seven years. I'm a proud father of four children, two boys, two girls. My mom's actually in town visiting us from Michigan, but I'm here tonight to voice my concern with what I believe to be the unfairness of the process that we've experienced through the request for Proposal 15-020 instrumentation process control training system. We wore the specified equipment. We provided what you asked for, for the least amount of money, and I've been told tonight there's going to be a motion to approve our competitors. I don't understand because, again, we were asked to provide oranges. We provided oranges at a better price than anyone else, and you've decided to go with apples. So what I would ask is just an opportunity to be able to bid on apples because we can provide what's being considered, but the specifications that we were given were not that. So we bid what was specified, which was our equipment. It was the least expensive, and now we want an opportunity to be able to bid apples to apples, so to speak. Again, Shell, BP, Oxy, Setaline, Petroleum, Chevron, all use the system that was specified, which I believe is why it was specified, in order to give you a world-class training system, world-class training program. Again, we were specified. Our equipment was specified. We provided that bid, and it was the lowest cost, and now that's not the one that is going to be considered. And I just want to know why, and again, have an opportunity to bid fairly on a comparable system, if that's the direction you choose to go. So that's all I'm asking tonight, that's why I'm here. So thank you.
Thank you. Tell me quickly which item you...
So it would be, I think it's Agenda Item 20.
Twenty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, the protocol and policy and procedure that we employ is, what you just heard from me is the most speakers get. We don't discuss with the speaker the issues, so I was really just trying to get clarification as to which item you were concerned about, and that's True North Consulting Group, is that?
Advanced Technology.
No, no, that's your company.
Right.
But the...
I think Technical Laboratory Systems was the one that we had considered.
Mm-hmm, I see it. It's on sale. Yes.
What number is that?
Mm-hmm.
Aaron Paul.
Mr. Paul.
Yes.
We'll certainly ask our staff to take a look at this. This is the first time I've learned that there was some discussion about who is the rightful winner of the bid.
Okay.
So we'll look into this.
It's 21, actually.
Excuse me, Madam President. I have a concern. I was expressing to the Chancellor that I remember when Board Meeting had exactly 12 chairs and there were names in every chair. So we've grown a lot since then, and I have a concern that there are people in the hallway, and I ask her, do those persons need to be in here, and was there a way that we could accommodate them? So could I ask staff, if, security or staff, to see if those people in the hallway need to be in, and if we can bring in other chairs and accommodate them? Thank you.
We have another guest who would like to speak, Teresa Marie Ayala. Ms. Ayala?
Good afternoon, Madam Chancellor, Board President, Appleman, trustees, faculty and staff. I am Teresa Maria Ayala, candidate for District One for Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and address you this afternoon. I am a product of the Fort Worth ISD, Tarrant County College and Texas Christian University. I currently work for a top 20 Fortune 500 company as a commercial contracts manager. I'm passionate about family, education and community, and I believe that we can all serve. One of my favorite quotes is, "Never worry about the numbers. Help one person at a time and start with the person that's closest to you." These words and the examples that I have observed from my parents, my siblings and my family are what motivate me to serve my community and to help improve the lives of others. Education enlightens people. As a former student and adjunct professor here at TCC, I have intimate knowledge of the value that the college brings to the students and to the community. This institution is very dear to my heart. I first learned the significance of TCC when I participated in a reading comprehension program in middle school. So with deep roots in our community and a passion to help others, and coming from a family of educators, I realize the importance of education and how it transforms families, individuals and communities. Having an understanding of complex organizations and a track record of cultivating relationships, I think that should position me to be effective in helping students realize their potential and also ensure the progress of TCC. Students and families trust TCC, and we must proactively convey the best innovative thinking that we possibly can. Everything that we do and everything that we offer to the TCC students is core to their success. We must work together to keep our students on their path to the completion of whatever field of study that they decide to pursue. By doing so, we ensure that our communities remain strong, and we also are contributing to the economic development of our cities. TCC has reason to be inspired by its history. As we embark on the next 50 years, we move forward with a sense of purpose, one that as a cohesive team, we will strive to become what we imagine, and in doing so, we will also allow the students to become what they imagine and to also, and let them envision what they want to succeed in. I hope to work with you, to serve our community, to educate minds, to empower people and to change the world. Remember, never worry about the numbers, help one person at a time, and start with the person nearest to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Josh Barber.
Good evening, everybody. Chancellor, Board, attendees, and good to see you all. My name is Josh Barber, and I'm also running for the place one for the district. Among my main motivations, one of the opportunities that I've had in my rather young and tumultuous career is to get to work with professionals, get to work with high school students, got into work side-by-side with them. And one of the recurring themes that I've always had, I'm a former TCC graduate myself, of which I'm very proud, but there are lots of kids who say, where are you going next year? And they say, well, I'm going to TCC. And they say, it kind of doubt-trodden. And I always encourage them, I said, no, look, you're giving yourself the best chance, the lowest risk with the best chance to do what's best for you, your family, your future family and your community. It's something I'm very passionate about, it's something I like to talk about, not only with the students themselves, but get to talk to teachers who are pushing those students forward. I've gotten to work with United Educators Association. My mother is an educator herself. While I've never been an educator myself besides tutoring, it's something that I just feel is core to any community, and if I'm thinking about it, the, I feel like one of the only things that are holding communities together these days anymore are education districts, including the college districts, the school districts. And as we continue to build partnerships with secondary schools and independent school districts, I very much want to be part of the voice pushing forward for this next generation when we are pushing the new needs of the society forward. I, sorry, a little bit torn up about it, but I very much would like to be a part steering the direction for the next generation. I have contacts and people I've talked to who are, like I said, taxpayers, parents, students, professors, and I feel like I've got a pretty good vision for all the stakeholders that have their stake in the district. So I would very much like to ask for y'all's vote, and I appreciate your time in letting me sit here and talk with y'all today.
Thank you. That concludes our public speakers who wish to appear this evening. Our next item is early college high school introductions by our presidents. Chancellor Hadley?
Well, I don't see Dr. LeBlanc.
She's...
You're standing in for Dr. LeBlanc. Okay. One, two, three. Who else is not here? Dr. Goldman, he was here earlier, what happened to him?
He's on his way.
He's on his way back. Okay.
Do you want to move on?
Maybe we can skip that for just a moment, the early college high school.
We can go to item number four.
Stephen, where's Stephen? Your family out here yet? Okay. We'll go to item four, Madam President.
Presentations on Student Access and Success and Administrative Programs and Projects.
Okay. All right. Dr. Till Marshall, or Mr. Till Marshall is going to come and talk to us about institutional intelligence and technology, and I think what he will give you will be somewhat of a primer to help you to understand the nature of what we do at Tarrant County College and our attempt to keep up with all of the things that are required of us. Mr. Marshall, you ready?
I think they're chasing down the control clicker.
Oh, the control clicker.
Yeah.
We're having all kinds of issues today.
Well, I think I was third, and now I'm first, so...
Now you're first. Ms. Birch to the rescue. Thank you, Ms. Shelley.
We remain flexible.
You go to bed one day and you think you're the new guy, and then you wake up the next day and you find out you've been here three years, and...
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it's a good thing. It's busy. I love my job, I love the opportunity to serve, and I guess based on some discussions from the Board, it's like, you know, we see items come about to the Board, and we'd like to put it in the context of what's your total operation look like, how does it feel, what's the impact on the district? So I felt this is a good time, after three years, to give a catch-up. It's also a good time because we're getting ready to go into the next strategic institutional planning process. In the past, there was a strategic plan for the institution and a strategic plan for technology. I'm of the mind that you can, the technology plan should be a part of the overall institutional strategic plan, so as our technology plan has basically come to the end of its three-year timetable...
Five-year.
Five, well, no, the strategic plan for the district was five-year, the technology one was only three years.
Oh, yes, yes.
We don't really like going out five years, too many things happen in technology that you look kind of like a fool if you try to project five years, so I'm foolish enough that to have my predictions to be published, so. So I want to talk about resources in higher education and why we do what we do with regards to technology. Students are introduced to technology now in K-12. I came, my last position previous to here was at a large independent school district in Florida, 180,000 students, over 200 schools, and in Florida, they were mandated that by this time in 2015, half of all the materials that the students were learning from had to be delivered digitally. So I know that Texas doesn't have something similar, but in Governor Abbott's platform when he was running for governor, he outlined a high-quality digital learning component for his vision for the state of Texas, and in it, it talks about laptop programs, things that we're already doing now with some of our partners out of South, digital course content requirements, that's the learning materials the students receive, not through the textbook, but through any other method of delivery. And parents who have their own designs on helping their students, helping their children get educated, purchasing digital resources for them, everything from laptops and tablets and smartphones. So that's who we have coming to us. The university requirements for the students that we prepare for transfer all have technology competency requirements placed upon them. So as we educate the students for transfer, we are mandated to make sure that they have certain technology competencies and literacies. Also, all of our academic programs have technology literacy components, whether it's within the specific materials that they deliver or the materials that they're going to be seeing when they go to university that have to do with nursing or engineering or even art and dance. They all have a technology component embedded within them. So it's incumbent upon us to provide that technology for those students and their activities. Also workforce, the students that are not in the transfer programs, the ones that are going directly from a certificate program or something from the Workforce Texas Education Grants that we get, they are very highly technical. We are, again, tasked with providing those students with the resources to make sure that what they are seeing in the classroom is what they can expect to see when they go to work. And business and organizations, I sit on a number of advisory groups for our curriculum committees, they actually tell us, help us to define what it is they expect from their students from technology and literacy for workforce. And then we have to operate ourselves as an ongoing organization. I have to buy technology to make sure that we pay our faculty and staff, that we have access to the Internet, that we have the files and the data that we need on a regular basis. So the resources in higher education are typically split down those three ways. So how much does this cost? Overall, I take a look at our expenses compared to the expenses that the college itself has defined. So this year, our technology budget was $21.247 million, and last year, it was a little bit larger. So this year, that number is 6.4%, 6.49% of our overall district expense budget. So these are just expenses, this is not the capital budget, these are just our ongoing daily expenses. Our expense budget is 327 million, and the 21.24 is 6.5% of that. Last year, we had a few more needs, and the overall percentage was 7.16%. Now, that's us, how do we compare nationally? The national range for associate-granting degree institutions is anywhere between 4% and 7%, and it has to do with the size of the institution. We all have to buy certain things, whether you're a small community college or a large community college, you have to buy payroll systems and student systems. So some of the smaller institutions, they tend to hover around the 7%. And the median of the national average, I mean, the median of the national associate-granting institutions is 5.9%. So we're a little bit higher, and I'll go into the reasons why we are typically going to be a little bit higher than the national average. One of the reasons are we have budget expenditures within my organization that are not typically found at other institutions. The expenditure is there, but it's typically not found under IT. One of those is institutional intelligence and research. And about 65 to 70% of the community colleges around the country, that office either stands alone and reports up to a chancellor, or it's part of the academic structure. So there's really no best practice of where it should go, but in this case, it reports up to me, so I add that budget as part of my IT budget. We also have institutional effectiveness and compliance, and part of the reason last year's budget was a little bit higher than this year's was we were undergoing a SACS accreditation visit, and we had certain budget allocations extended towards that activity, and they fall under the IT umbrella. We also host a data center for ourselves, but our data center also hosts Radio Shack. So we have to put things in place from a technology perspective that costs more to us to make sure that things don't go bump in the night for a very prominent third party because their building is our building. So over time, what does it look like, this six and a half percent over, you can see the red line is our expense budget as it has occurred over the last 10 years, and the little blue bars are the IT budget. So you can see that our growth pattern is almost the same as the growth pattern with the expense budget. A couple of years, there were a few dips, and I'll get to that in this particular chart. I like charts, trying to not make them too busy. So this is the percentage of IT is, I mean, the percentage of our expenditures over the overall expense budget from year to year. So the bars represent the year, the fiscal year, and you can see it averages anywhere from, starting in '03, '04, about 6.5%. There's a dip in '07, '08 and '09, and then an increase in '10, '11 through another falling off in the last couple of years. We don't allocate the same percentage every year to IT because things change. We have refresh cycles that are different from year to year. So over time, we'll hover around the same average, but some years will be higher and some years will be lower. In '03, '04 and '05, you went through a data tell implementation, and the cost of that implementation was spread out over a number of years, so that's why those years were a little bit higher. The next three years, there was not much new going on within IT. It was pretty much a static environment, nothing new was added, and we were hovering around the 5% and even the 4.8%, 4.9%. Beginning in 2010, '11, we started adding buildings, locations. We added the Trinity River location, TREC, and I think some major work was done out at the Opportunity Center also. So there were a lot of infrastructure needs that were, had to be taken into account, some things that were purchased upfront, and you see that number went from 5% in '09, '10 to almost 8% in '10, '11. And since then, it's started to go back down. So the national average is that gold bar, and we play above and below the line, and our district average over the last 10 years is 6.5%. By category, this is how we spend our money. Academics and administrative, it's almost split evenly, the amount of budget we spend on those items, and then we have what we call shared infrastructure, and I'll mention that in the next slide, I'll break down what these things are. So our shared infrastructure, this is the services that every department on campus and our campuses use, whether you're academic or administrative. Video services, I had a number today that I thought... Video services, I had a number today that I thought was, we added over 700 cameras in the last three years. I just found out with the new buildings that were going up, OWTL, the Early College High School, and with the Energy Technology Center, we'll now have about 1,000 cameras on our shared infrastructure. But that group also does the videos that you see for the announcements. They also help faculty capture classroom information. So they're shared across both academic and administrative. The data centers, the phone systems, the network, our, a number of our, the two departments I talked about, and our help desk and print services, we don't distinguish between the customer. The customer could be faculty, staff, or student. On top of that, we do things that are strictly just for academics. We have a student-faculty portal. This is where the Black Board or MITCCD, if you've heard of those terms, this is their portal where they exchange communications, they host instructional content, and courses are supported, classroom technology, the projectors, the sound systems. All these things, all those items are academic in nature and have a specific purpose outside of any other service. And then we have the administrative technology, and these are the things that are, you've got to find in place at all colleges and universities, student information systems, finance systems, security, dashboards, records management. So the 38% for the top two each, and then the bottom is about 23% is where our money goes. So what does this look like? I know you have an opportunity to get around campuses, and I had a discussion today with one of my staff, and I said, "When you're walking around campus, you see these things, but after you've seen them for the third or fourth time, it becomes noise." So it's like background noise. You don't really register the impact. And I asked my staff to go out and take photographs of every place where we have technology in the district, and I ended up with about 700 photographs. So, you know, how do I put 700 photographs in front of you? A lot of it looks the same, but I wanted to make sure that we started to create an archive of evidence with regards to what it is we do. The Communication Center in Trinity River, this is part of what we had to build to make sure that when we bring the Internet into our building or into the district, we don't mix it with what data, with what Radio Shack does. So it's a secure, just for our piece. It makes it so that typically in any other school data center, they would just include this in the data center, but since we're hosting an external entity, I had to make sure that all of our communication structure was separate. So this is an added cost that you probably won't see at too many other institutions. And it looks like a good computer room, and it is, but it's specific to just our ability to communicate without having the load of Radio Shack on top of us. Within that same location is our data center where we actually host our servers, and you'll see requests later tonight for virtual servers, which are replacing some of the equipment that's in this data center. In the first picture, along the left-hand side, you'll see a fence that runs the length of the room. On the left-hand side of the fence is the actual Radio Shack presence. So on the right side is ours and the left side is theirs, and that's how we make sure we keep each other apart. Throughout the district, we have wiring closets. This is to make sure that we are pushing phone signal and data signal out to all of our campus rooms. I'm very proud of this. I've had the opportunity to see a lot of different wiring closets in my life. It looks usually like a box of cables, a box of spaghetti, and our staff has created a standard that is, I welcome, and they color-code items, they have a specific numbering system, and it was, it's hard fought to come by that type of standard when you're working with vendors from a bunch of different agencies, but I wanted to make sure we all had a chance to see what the inside of a wiring closet looks like. Let's go to the fun stuff now. So I try to include something from each campus that shows the impact of the student and their access to technology. So the Northeast Campus, this is a picture of the library, one of the open areas that they have, and they are pretty packed. It's kind of hard to find empty seats, or a time when we could take a picture when there weren't students there. Northeast also has a Mac lab dedicated to their media academic programs, like television and broadcast. So that's a picture of the Mac lab. It's a little bit different than the other labs because it's full of Macs, and there's not too many of those around the district. Well, Northwest, Northwest was the first campus that we really did the Math Emporium correctly. There's a picture of it. You probably have seen that same type of installation if you had a chance to go on one of the tours at the other Math Emporiums. And then we also have on Northwest, there's a, along with all the other work that we do there, they have a certification lab. And this is a lab specifically dedicated to workforce-type programs where the students can tear down those machines. You see a lot of cables, a little like it's not kept up very well, but that's because they're constantly breaking down the equipment and building it back up to gain their certifications. We hear about sticky spaces. Here's a really good example of one of those sticky spaces. I'm not quite sure what room this came out of. I have a feeling it's probably over near one of the counseling centers.
Transfer Center.
Transfer Center, yeah, because we have the college pendants up on the wall. The students, these are computers that have a purpose for that room, but they can also take advantage of those computers for whatever other purpose they might want to have. So students find these places rather quickly. They will use them for closed study because some of them don't like studying in large groups. Also, on South, there's a picture of their library, and if you look off to the right a little bit, there's some really large screens. South Campus Library, we worked with them and defined a standard for ADA-type of an installation. So if you look to the left of that table, there's an open space where there's not a chair, that's wheelchair-accessible, and it's got large screens, it has assistive technology, and we're also doing that in other libraries. Just want to give you an idea of where it looks like there. Southeast Campus, they have an instruction, we were talking about this a little bit at lunch today, the Cisco Lab. So it's, again, a different type of lab. When you walk into the room, it gives you a different feel as to what's going on and what's being taught. They have the same type of equipment in that lab that we have in our wiring closets and our data center. We push out some of the best students that the state has, and I think even one of them won a national award for exercising the education they find in that lab. And then here's another sticky space on Southeast Campus, configured a little bit differently. Bill, I don't know. Yeah, it's, when you're looking at 700 pictures, you're looking for certain things, and I'm thinking, "Well, it's a great sticky space, but I don't know where it is on the campus." The students do, though.
Oh, that's Career Center.
The Career Center, okay. Trinity River, they have a language lab that's not too far from the library, and it's, we use the Rosetta Stone language software, and they have hardware specific to that, where they can speak in the microphones, they have closed headsets, so they're not bothering their friends next to them. Again, it's something a little bit different than the normal computer lab. And then the Trinity River Library presents us a lot of challenges. Tahita has probably the most diverse library visitor known across the district because of its location, and that place is always slammed. And it's a challenge for the librarians because we have to make sure that we're allowing students to have access even when there's a large non-student population that's using the equipment. So I wish we had more space there because it seems every time we move more equipment into that environment, it gets used rather quickly. And then we have TREC. The Nursing and Allied Health, they have very specific accreditation criteria with regards to how you test and where you test and the environments, and we have one of the best testing centers, I think I've seen in the nation, and it's proven out by the number of students that achieve certification in their programs through this testing center. The software library is more than complete. They have specific testing, you see those little hoods over the monitors that are countersunk so they can't cheat off their neighbor. I mean, we sell it as high-tech, but really, it's to make sure you can't see what's going on next to you. And then it's also used as an open lab. And then some of our most exciting technology is that dedicated to our patient simulation areas spread throughout the buildings at TREC. This is where I have no qualms having a TCC graduate treat me in the health field. I know that they've seen more than a lot of, I've even had a friend of mine, I mean, a friend of my daughter's who's attending medical school at the University of South Florida in Florida, who says, "I wish I had some of this stuff," because I showed my kids the pictures. We're having a dedication of another 3D cadaver. Thankfully, it was donated to us only because of the work we've done with the first one that we purchased. So the grant tour recognizes the good work that we've done, and they're saying, "What can we do to help?" And we said, "Just get us another one. We can give more students the experience." So that's an idea. There's tons more I can show you. If you want to come stop by my office, I'm like a proud dad. I'll start popping open pictures of those 700. But catch me soon, because in the next couple of weeks, my daughter will be having a child, and I'll be showing you different kinds of pictures, so.
Any questions?
So any questions? I kind of rapid-fire this stuff. I get on a roll. As long as I see smiles and the heads nodding, I keep going, and I know there's going to be questions, I'll, I can go backwards with this if I need to, so.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Carter, you missed an exciting first chapter about expenses and budgets and how much all this costs, so I'm going to charge you to spend some time with Mr. Marshall for a recap, because I think that will be of interest to you. And what you didn't mention, there are board members calling, saying, "I can't download my packet."
I couldn't either, but it's, well, that's the wonderful thing about technology. It changes so fast that, you know, things happen, and we had it fixed in a couple of minutes, so.
Well, we appreciate what you do to keep us moving and going throughout the district. It's very complicated.
How would you assess the district overall?
Mr. He. Mr. He, turn on your microphone, please.
How would you assess our district overall in terms of being state-of-the-art?
It's hard to stay state-of-the-art across your entire envelope. So where I think we are state-of-the-art is in our support for instructional programs, particularly those that I've outlined here. So nursing support, the Opportunity Center is a wonderful place to look at and see really different types of technology. We've got a 3D printer, an industrial-type 3D printer. So, you know, and this is what, I would never would have bought it, but the faculty have incorporated that technology into their curriculum, and when they come and ask for that type of technology, it's rather easy to justify it when you've seen the curriculum around it. So I really think our data center is great. We have a good disaster recovery center, but you'll hear me request funds for a network study because it's a 10-year-old plus design. So you pick and choose where you are great, and then you constantly work at process improvement on all the other areas where you're not great. But I think the tools we put, I know, I don't think, I know, because I've seen enough of the rest of the institutions around the country to know that we outperform just about any community college out there with regards to the tools we put into our students' hands. We were the first community college to have a 3D anatomage digital cadaver. There's probably only two or three. There's maybe only 10 medical schools that have them. So when you have something like that, that you can put in the hands of your students and our visitors, that convinces students that this is the place they need to be. That's where I feel that our appropriate use of our funding, I mean, I thank you guys over and over again that we can do those types of things for students, because payroll's not exciting unless you miss a check, you know? And we have to pay for those things. But you don't really have to pay for a language lab, but we do. And you don't have to pay for that anatomage or those teaching resources, but we do. So we really are, our transfer rate shows that we're good. The, not the accreditation, the matriculation agreements we just had recently with UTA with regards to our honor students, getting honor student scholarships, it's because we have resources that we can supply to our honor students. Our cornerstone students get an iPad to use while they're going through the program. So the faculty have created curriculum, they have an opportunity to exercise technology regardless of their major within the cornerstone program. So I really feel that's where we excel.
Yeah, and I've heard several presentations by some of the high schools, and the technology in the high schools is unbelievable. We've got to stay at least up to that. They have a 3D printer at Eagle Mountain Saginaw.
Well, Fort Worth ISD, we're partnering with them on the Early College High School on South Campus. Their students are walking around with laptops. So the district is, the Fort Worth ISD district is giving their students laptops. So you've got to be prepared for that student to turn that laptop in and come to TCC and say, "Where's my laptop?" You know, so. And we'll say, "It's over there in that room." And it's bolted down to that desk, and if you can fit your lap underneath of it, that's a laptop, so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if there are no other questions from the board, I would just like to say that I'm very, very appreciative of all of our TCC leadership, the entire KELT and all the other people, for always making sure that we know what we need to do. Whether or not we think we are able to do everything that we know we need to do, at least we know what it is. And I think that the road that we're on with Mr. Marshall and his team is absolutely the right road. Yes, there are things that Tim will probably like to have in the 15, 16 budget that won't be in there, but the good thing about his request is that they really are prioritized, and they are prioritized in conjunction with the campus presidents and the other KELT members. I mean, what is it that you feel like you've got to have in order to at least keep up? And so you've heard him say that we spend slightly more than the average amount that's spent for technology in similarly situated institutions, and that is one of the things that gives us the edge, because when you're discussing technology and budgets, you'll hear the same discussions all over the country. Nobody feels like they have all the money they need to put into technology. But I think one of the most important things that Tim left you with is that so many students will graduate from high school, completely accustomed, a little closer to the mic, completely accustomed to having all that technology. When they come here and they don't have it, then they are not very happy. So from that perspective, we really are being pushed to, to make sure that we keep up. So I want to join Tim in thanking you, board members, for being generous enough to make sure that we kind of stay on the cutting edge. We're there, as Tim said, in many instances, we're already there, but overall, we still have a few more things to go. Tim gave our JCC members a surface, I guess is what they got, and one of the faculty members asked at the last meeting, "How do you go about turning it back in? What do you do?" And I told them that my recommendation, maybe decision, is for them to keep that surface as a part of a thank you from us for all the outstanding work that they do to help Tarrant County College stay on the cutting edge in so many different ways. So thank you, Tim, for that great report.
I thank you.
Thank you.
This is a good segue for the JCC.
And this is a good segue for me to move to the JCC. Are we all in place? Very good. Where's Ms. Silverberg? Come on up, Ms. Silverberg. Karen Silverberg is the president of the Tarrant County College District JCC. Each of our five campuses has two representatives who sit on the District JCC, and two years ago, we added an 11th position because they convinced us that the president of the JCC just did not have time to truly represent the district as well as the campus from which he or she was elected. So we went to an 11-person JCC. Stephen, I know who you are, Stephen. Stephen Brown. Stephen Brown was the first person to have the honor to hold that position, and he's as proud as punch that he was able to do that. And Karen has a nice token of appreciation to Stephen from all of us at Tarrant County College for the outstanding service that you've done. We understand you have your family here with you. Your mom and a good friend. That's the way moms are, right? We just, wherever the kids are. So Ms. Silverberg, you are all up.
Thank you, Madam Chancellor, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. It is my pleasure and certainly an honor for me to honor Stephen Brown, who, as the chancellor indicated, was the first independent chair of the Joint Consultation Committee, the JCC. In this position, Stephen has served In this position, Stephen has served on numerous district committees, has been part of hiring decisions and organizational decisions and has incredibly represented our faculty as a whole throughout very turbulent times and coming now into more calm times. And we want to express our appreciation to him for his outstanding leadership and his contribution to moving the Faculty Association forward and the district forward toward even brighter futures. So, Stephen, if you will come forward. I have a plaque. In addition, I believe that several of the members of the JCC who are retiring are also present and I would ask them to stand, please, and to be recognized for their service for the past year. Each campus has a president and a president-elect and then the president-elect amongst themselves who will be the chair-elect for the JCC. And as was introduced last meeting, the new chair-elect of the JCC for the coming year is Tyson McMillan from Trinity River. And I will be assuming and have assumed the job of JCC chair for the coming year and I hope that I will be able to step into Stephen's footsteps and to continue the legacy that he has provided. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Silverberg. Before you sit, if you all will come up here behind the board, we'd like to commemorate this moment. And Stephen, while they are coming, ask your parent, your mother and her friend to stand so that we can see them and acknowledge them. Welcome. We're glad you're here. We want you behind the... I want the whole board. Mr. Heed, you want to come one chair closer? Well, that's a good-looking group, isn't it? Absolutely.
It's so important to us to have you in the mix, in the trenches with us and it is very meaningful to us as we carry out our responsibilities from the board's perspective. And we know it's extra and above and beyond, so we are very appreciative.
And now, Ms. Appleman, I think we're all in place for the introductions. We'd like very much for you to meet the principals of our Early College High Schools. We are so excited about the Early College High Schools and the additional opportunities that accrue to our residents from those schools. The first Early College High School we had, of course, was on our Northwest Campus and Dr. Evelyn LeBlanc did a great job in making that Early College High School work with very, very limited funds. And it got off to a great start. We graduated our first class this past May from the Early College High School. And of course, we have all of the others that are jumping up. So, I guess the next one that really went online is kind of a toss-up, but I think Southeast was ahead, I know it was, was ahead of Northeast. So, that was Early College High School number two. And then, Early College High School number, that is not true. I have to go back because Trinity River Campus had the second Early College High School that's called TABs, the Texas Academy, the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences. And theirs is in cooperation with Fort Worth Independent School District, University of North Texas Health Science Center and the University of North Texas. And they are going to have their first graduates this year. You'll see some information in your program book about some of the outstanding things that they have done. And then, of course, the next one would have been Southeast Campus with Dr. Bill Coppola. And that's not true either. The next one was South Campus. Have to keep them all straight. South Campus was a little bit different in that the Early College High School there is on the Everman Independent School District Campus. We had a really good time helping them dedicate that in-school Early College High School and it is focused on career and technical education. It was something that Dr. Pfeiffer asked me about when we were designing our 2015 Vision Statement, TCC Vision 2015. She said to me that we do all of these wonderful things for the academically-prepared students and those who are really on their way to doing great things academically. And we have so many students who are not academically inclined but are quite smart and ready to go in career and technical areas and she wanted us to look at making that happen. Well, along comes Peter Grant Jordan from New York City and he was the one who made that happen for her. Unfortunately, Dr. Pfeiffer is no longer with us. She passed away a couple of months ago, but she got to see her dream come to reality. So, that was our fifth, fourth Early College High School. Fourth one? That was the third, that was the third one. Okay, then number four would have been Southeast Campus. That's right.
I went from number one to number four.
Sorry about that, Bill. Went from number one to number four. And so, who did I miss? Because we have, and then Northeast. Yeah, Northeast. The Northeast opened its Early College High School this fall as well. But I'll have to tell you, Northeast caught up with Southeast because they started way later than the Southeast Campus did and still opened in the fall of 2014. So, that was very good. So, now we have five and we have the sixth Early College High School under construction on the Southeast Campus. That will give us, South Campus, that will give us an on-campus Early College High School on all five of our regular campuses. So, with that, they have asked to present the principals. They are all very, very proud of the people who have been selected to run the Early College High Schools. So, I guess I'll go in the order of the campus openings, as I always do. Dr. Jordan, you get to go first to introduce your Early College High School principal.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board. It's my honor to introduce Ms. Lisa Castillo, who is the principal of TCC South Fort Worth ISD Collegiate High School. She does not have a building. She does not have students, but you'd never know it because she's always in front of a group of students and parents talking to them or in meetings, whether it's on campus or with Fort Worth ISD. She's currently recruiting for staff as well as for students for this school and implementing the MOU between TCC and Fort Worth ISD. Ms. Castillo, her educational career began at Texas A&amp;M where she served as coordinator of peer advising and academic probation advising for that institution. She also served as admission advisor at Mountain View College of the Dallas Community College System. She transitioned to high school teaching and coaching in Dallas and Arlington 10 years ago. Ms. Castillo taught speech, communications, theater arts, physical education and web design. She spent the last six years as assistant principal for the Venus ISD and most recently, the Irving ISD. She served as summer school principal for Irving High School in 2014 and as summer school principal for the middle school in 2013. Her experience as a high school teacher and administrator includes everything from supervision of curriculum and instruction to coordination of career and technical programs, master scheduling and testing and so forth. She comes to TCC South Campus Fort Worth ISD Collegiate High School with a bachelor's and master's degrees in counseling from Texas A&amp;M at Commerce, as well as principal and school superintendent certification from the University of Texas at Arlington and the University of Texas, Permian Basin, respectively. Lisa is trained by the Cambridge Group as a strategic certified facilitator. She enjoys public and motivational speaking. She's a sports enthusiast and she and her husband has twin daughters, Amelia and Alicia. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Lisa Castillo to Fort Worth ISD and TCC.
Welcome, Ms. Castillo. We're pleased to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chancellor, President Appleman, members of the board. It's truly an honor to be the first principal of the TCC South Collegiate High School. I'm very excited to be joining you as well as Fort Worth ISD. I'd specifically like to thank Dr. Jordan, Dr. Wilson, Dr. Fang, as well as Wendy Jasper Martinez and Wendy Hammond for being such an amazing support for me during this transition. The welcome that I've received at TCC South has been above all others. This truly has been the best transition into any position that I've ever received. The warmth of this district is just overwhelming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're glad you're here. Dr. Gobin, you're next.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce Bobby Knutts. Bobby began her career as an English teacher at Nichols Junior High in the Arlington ISD. She then served for 11 years in the Grapevine-Colleyville Independent School District as a teacher at both Heritage Middle School and Colleyville Heritage High School. She then moved to New York City and served as a teacher and assistant principal at the Jill Chaffetz Transfer High School in the South Bronx. After that, Bobby loved this area, no offense to New York City, Pete. She moved back to GCISD in Grapevine-Colleyville as an assistant principal in 2012, moving on to the Irving ISD as a secondary principal and then was enticed to come back with the partnership with Grapevine-Colleyville ISD and TCC Northeast in the fall of 2014. Bobby earned a Bachelor of Arts in English from UT Arlington and her Master of Science is in Urban Schools Building Leadership from Lehman College City University of New York. In 2010, Bobby received the Aspiring Educational Leader Award from the City of New York Lehman College's Division of Education. And I would like to add that Dr. Ryan from the superintendent of Grapevine-Colleyville School District said about Bobby, we just could not find a better person for this particular role. She's just the right fit and I think our experience on Northeast Campus would lead us to agree. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Bobby Knutts.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Dr. Hadley, board, thank you for the opportunity. You know, as we celebrated our opening this fall and many of you were there, you saw the excitement of our students and what a difference it's already made in their life, even though we're just to April, they haven't, they, we have students with college credit already, which is just life-changing for these 14-year-old young people. And the campus at Northeast, Dr. Gobin, Mr. Harrod, Mr. Smith, all the instructors have just been so helpful and the transition for our students has just been incredible. Just, I agree with Ms. Castillo, it's just, working with TC is one of the greatest partnerships that I've ever been a part of. And just in opening our school, I see Mr. Chadwell here and all the things they did to just provide a space that is just beyond compare. I mean, my teachers came into these classrooms where technology that Mr. Marshall's, Dr. Marshall's group put in is just unbelievable and it's reaching our kids, it's engaging our kids, it's helping them to transition from just an eighth grader to actual college student. And we participated yesterday in the International Festival held at Tarrant County Northeast and our kids were actually making friends and connections with the students on that campus and they came back talking about Tim. And one of my teachers said, who's Tim? He goes, the college student that I met at the, you know, so they are being part of the campus and even the students are welcoming. So, thank you so much for this opportunity and it's just, it's just a great privilege and honor to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. LeBlanc, stand in.
Good evening, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman and members of the board. Am I talking close enough? I'm delighted to introduce Ms. Toni Grant, principal of Marine Creek Collegiate High School on the Northwest Campus. Ms. Grant joined our campus last July after serving Fort Worth ISD as an assistant principal at Trimble Tech and Eastern Hills High School. Prior to that, she worked for both Fort Worth ISD and Arlington ISD as a middle school math and science teacher and also as a testing coordinator. Ms. Grant holds a bachelor's degree in biology and a master's degree in educational and organizational administration. Ms. Grant has noted that her main purpose is to be a guide, a facilitator and a role model for the students, faculty and staff of Marine Creek Collegiate High School. She wants to make sure that they are all given every opportunity to be successful. We, on the Northwest Campus, wholeheartedly support Ms. Grant and the mission of the Early College High School and are very proud of the 351 Early College High School students that we welcome to our campus every day. So, Ms. Grant?
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Get my notes up. Madam Chancellor, President Appleman, members of the board, I really want to take this opportunity to thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, Kirsten Cooper and the rest of the TCC Northwest Campus community for all of your support and all of your investments into not only Marine Creek Collegiate High School students, but also your trust in me. Over this past year, we have crossed many hurdles as a team and I foresee us being able to cross many more. This year, we will graduate 62 students and out of those 62 students, we'll have over 70% of them to graduate with an associate's degree and many more to graduate with an associate's degree in the additional fall term. So, we just want to thank you for this partnership and say that it's an honor to work with you and say that we honestly wouldn't be able to do what we do for kids without your help. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Thank you. And Ms. Cooper, thank you so much for standing in for Dr. LeBlanc. Dr. Coppola?
Ms. Hadley, Ms. Appleman, members of the board, I think one of the amazing things that you're witnessing here is the next generation of not only leaders, but also they're mentoring the students. You notice that they're sitting there with their iPhones, talking on their notes, when those of us who don't have any hair have pieces of paper up here. It's like, no offense, Tim, it's like that. Yeah, it is truly my pleasure to, you know, as you know, we have a wonderful relationship at Arlington Independent Schools District and an even better one with the Early College High School. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ben Boland as the founding principal of the Tarrant County College Southeast Arlington Independent School District Collegiate High School, which is just a wonderful title that we worked on. Before coming to us, Dr. Boland taught middle school and high school math in Arlington ISD and Grand Prairie ISD for 11 years. He also served as an adjunct and developmental math instructor at TCC for six years and as an adjunct educational leadership and policy studies instructor for University of Texas in Arlington. He also served as assistant principal at both middle schools and high schools in Arlington for six years. Dr. Boland... UTA. Dr. Cavazos and his team cannot have done a better job in the selection of Dr. Boland as the first principal. His passion for helping his students succeed goes way beyond that of any I've seen, and his dedication to change in a cycle of poverty through education is his true mission. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ben Boland.
Welcome, Dr. Boland.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
You too. Good afternoon, Madam Chancellor, Madam President, members of the board. Doesn't seem like it was that long ago that we were doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the new outstanding building that I'm privileged to be part of on Southeast Campus. So, very great to see you all again and appreciate the opportunity. And I wanted to thank Dr. Coppola and his staff and Mike Sinatell, the liaison, and I see Dr. Xena Jackson back there, the Vice President, and the rest of the Southeast Campus staff for really coming together. This is a new experience for everyone, but really it takes us all working together for the best interests of students. And really what we're doing is creating a wonderful opportunity for the well-deserving students of the Arlington Independent School District to change their backgrounds and change their lives for the better. At the end of the first semester, we had many, many students that completed college hours, and they were the first person in their family to do so. So we're really proud of that and really proud of the growth that we see. They're starting to believe in what they can accomplish. So that's a great thanks to you for collaborating with the Arlington Independent School District to making this campus a reality. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you, and thank you for believing in students of Arlington ISD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I introduce our principal, I want to thank the board, Mrs. Chancellor Hadley and Mrs. Appleman, all of you, for your support of the early college high school. Every one of our models are slightly different, and yet we are making things better for the students that we are serving. Our campus has a little bit different model. We have only the juniors and seniors of our early college high school, and they are on our campus. And so there are things I could tell you about what vigorous students they are, but I'll let Mr. Langston tell you. Troy Langston is the principal of the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences. He was born in Fort Worth and is a product of the Fort Worth Independent School District. He graduated from high school for science and engineering professions at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, and he started his TCC career at the Northwest Campus in 1989. And then he graduated from UTA in 1993 with a BA in anthropology. He went on to earn a BS in zoology from UT Austin and then an MED from UTA in 2007. He taught biology, chemistry, and advanced placement biology at Carter Riverside High School for 11 years and has served as assistant principal at Dunbar High School for the four years prior to being named founding principal of TABs. He's a first-generation college graduate. He's an Eagle Scout. He's an active runner. He participates in the Cowtown Marathon, and that skill in running equips him exquisitely to chase high school students if the need arises. It has not yet arisen. Troy Langston.
Welcome, Mr. Langston.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board. I am thrilled to say thank you for your generosity to the students in the Fort Worth ISD and the students in Tarrant County. As Fort Worth and Tarrant County grow in population and diversity and complexity, we need institutions of higher learning like the UT Health Science Center and especially Tarrant County College to realize that we have students in need, and you have welcomed us. And we know that we're all going to need healthcare professionals in the future. Why not have Fort Worth-grown students to do that? So we thank you very much for finding a place for us.
Thank you. Principals, would you please come up for a photo?
To work, to work.
Thank all of you. We're grateful having you. Thank you and welcome.
Dr. Jordan, are you ready for your presentation? All right, Ms. Appleman, the last presentation we have tonight, we have plenty of them for us tonight, will be presented by Dr. Jordan from South Campus.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. Again, thank you, President Appleman, members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce Dean Carolyn Robertson and two faculty members, Martha Gilchrist as well as Pauline Griffith, who will talk to you about a program that has been happening on South Campus that is designed to help engage students better and deeper in learning, but also to help improve student success. It's not often that you find in community colleges or undergraduate institutions students doing undergraduate research, but we have that here at Tarrant County College. And our faculty are going to talk to you, as well as some of our students, about what is happening there.
Welcome, team.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Appleman, Chancellor Hadley, board members, campus presidents, all lined up here on front, and all of the guests. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share a South Campus Student Success Initiative, which is very important to us. Our initiative is called Cultivating Scholars, and I've asked Dr. Dottie to give you a program from our last event, and we will be discussing that. She will also have a few copies to share with the presidents and the audience. Cultivating Scholars is a research-driven, critical-thinking initiative. And as you look at this slide, I want you to bear with me, it serves two purposes. First of all, it proves that there is a council for undergraduate research, a legitimate council, that lays out rationale for doing this type of research at the undergraduate level and cites the advantages on their website of such endeavors. Now, I want you to bear with me for just a moment because I used this slide that I knew Chancellor Hadley would not be real happy with because there's too much on it. I would like to think that, pretend that you're a student, you have never, you're an undergraduate, you have never done research before. Now squint a little bit and look at that slide. You've been told that you're going to do a research project, and the first thing you're doing is your literature search. And what do you find? Lots and lots of information. So as you squint at that, you have the same feeling that these students have. What is important? What do I use? What do I not use? And that's where the instructors can bring students to focus on what they need to do. And so the very next slide is what a student would get from all of that reading. They would bring that down into bullet form where they could just look at it. So undergraduate research enhances student learning through mentoring relationships with the faculty. It increases retention, that is shown by data on the Cure website. It increases enrollment in graduate education and provides effective career preparation. It develops critical thinking, which we are all really into these days, and we want our students to be able to do that. It develops creativity, problem-solving, and intellectual independence. Cultivating Scholars also helps to develop an understanding of research methodology, and it promotes an innovation-oriented culture. And so our program on South Campus, we want students to perform research, and we have a number of disciplines included in this program: biology, chemistry, education, engineering, English, and psychology. And one of our instructors, who you will hear from in just a moment, is trying to get other disciplines involved, and she's being pretty successful. Students learn research techniques, they hone their presentation skills, and importantly, they share their work with other students, professors, and guests. It gives the students an opportunity to participate in local, regional, and national research competitions. What happens with the student when they're in one of these Cultivating Scholars classes is they select a topic of interest, and then they pursue that topic with research, quality research. They develop a thesis with the faculty guidance. They compose concise and limited abstracts, and then they engage in their original research, once again guided by the faculty. So you see here an example of one of the students who competed in our competition last fall. The students examined a variety of methods. How can they convey all the information that they have learned from the research? So they develop methods to present. And importantly, then they present at a campus-wide event where they not only present to themselves, but to others. This is an overview of our Fall 2014 Cultivating Scholars Competition. This is looking down into the student center from the second level. The students are all with their posters. They are ready for the judges and for guests to come in and look at their posters. And each student must be able to explain what is on that poster. I want to tell you that for 25 years plus, I have judged at science fairs, and I have judged at two international science fairs. At this competition last fall, I saw projects that would have easily fit into one of those international science fair projects or competitions. So our students are doing good work. The research topics will vary depending on the student's interest. Block scheduling versus traditional scheduling in Texas public high schools was an interest of Vanessa, who was an education student. Strategies for teaching was something that Symitra wanted to look at, particularly with third-grade students with hearing difficulties in English. Zachary, one that was interested in EU textbooks versus traditional textbooks as related to student success. If I remember the results of his, I could not, I could not get in touch with Zachary, but if I can remember the results of his research, he found no significant difference. Please remember that this was not a longitudinal study, so if you really wanted to come up with data, we would have to continue that particular research over time. Jennifer was interested in strategies to teach elementary students with autism and dyslexia, and in fact, she did two complete projects last year. This shows our VPAA, Dr. Stephen Wilson, talking with one of the students. And when we do the judging, each judge has to talk to every student, and the student has to, at that point, be able to explain what they've done, why they did it, and what they found. So every student not only talks to judges, but they talk to their peers, and then they talk to guests that are in the area looking, oftentimes family or just other students that have wandered in and wondered what's going on. November 20th in 2014 was our second annual Cultivating Scholars event on South Campus. We had 64 student researchers participate, and the handout that you have lists each of those students with the title of their research project. At the end of the evening, three $250 scholarships were given to the presenters whose works were judged to be the best of the show. And this is a picture of the winners. One student is missing with Dr. Larry Redow, who is the VP of Student Development Services on South Campus. And Dr. Redow has been very kind to support this effort over the two years that we've been doing it. Dr. Barbara Cohen started Cultivating Scholars Project on South Campus, but Dr. Cohen retired in January. But we don't want to let this program grow. So I would like to introduce to you the lady who has very generously stepped up to the plate to take over leading the Cultivating Scholars Program. I'm sorry, went too far. Dr. Pauline Griffith.
I'll just make a couple of remarks. In developing academic inquiry skills, what we hope to nurture in students is the ability to select quality research material and then to identify the credibility of published material. I think that's really important in the age of Google, and to be able to discern the difference in that quality and appropriate research material. And then as far as critical thinking in their chosen subject, critical thinking is just such a broad concept, and I think that what we have to realize is that includes the ability to either analyze a concept and then perhaps to synthesize other elements in that concept. And then another thing that I think is very particularly significant in my discipline I teach in the humanities is to formulate good questions that are based on information and then to be able to generate answers that are maybe multiple answers for that question in various situations. And then another area, if you will, in my humanities discipline would be to just conduct a really good examination of given subjects. And so we hope that these first two areas will be strengthened with this initiative. Finally, when you look at the interdisciplinary and presentation skills, I think it's very important as far as a skill set that is marketable in the real world. And part of this initiative is to teach students to actually select a variety of methods that they can convey their ideas from, and that can be charts, it can be pictures, it can be diagrams, and they should also have some text that actually will tell, for instance, when something was produced or where or in what area. I think that that's very, very important for our students to learn as they go through and develop their skill sets in college. And what we realize is that these posters will actually present visually a person's concept, even if they are not necessarily in the room, if they are at a conference and perhaps they've gone into a session, that poster will be there presenting them and their work and their ability to do that work. There are many places that use these poster presentations to develop scholarships, grants, admissions into programs, and I think it's a real-life skill that is significant. So this is a valuable initiative, I think, and in all disciplines. And I have with me a student who was in my Fine Arts Honors Program last year, and she has produced the poster. I hope you'll go and look at it. It's really pretty vibrant, and it's on a humanities-based topic. She has been a very fine student. She has won our president's award, and she was selected to go to the Salzburg Initiative this year. So I am really, really proud of her, and I'm proud that she was in my class. And I would like to introduce you to her, and she's going to tell you about her experience in actually working with this kind of a program. So let me introduce to you Judy Lane.
Thank you, Dr. Griffith. Good evening, everyone. The poster project that I did was really a new experience for me. I hadn't done anything quite like this since probably sixth-grade science fair and certainly never in the humanities. So it was a fun, if challenging, experience. I did the poster project on a topic that I thought I knew pretty well, the life and writings of J.R.R. Tolkien. So before the project, I thought I had a pretty good grasp of the material. However, the project forced me to see the material in a new light. I had to... The poster project that I did was really a new experience for me. I hadn't done anything quite like this since probably sixth-grade science fair, and certainly never in the humanities. So it was a fun, if challenging, experience. I did the poster project on a topic that I thought I knew pretty well, the life and writings of J.R.R. Tolkien. So before the project, I thought I had a pretty good grasp of the material. However, the project forced me to see the material in a new light. I had to organize my knowledge in order to present it quickly while still getting the important details across, yet I couldn't sacrifice cohesiveness. So I had to prioritize my data. Think about, okay, this detail is fascinating, but is it necessary to get my point across? Does it bog down the visual display? Also, in the research process, I made some new connections between facts that I'd known for quite a while. So it was really fun to have sort of an aha moment on a topic that I thought I knew pretty well. Organizing the visuals required a lot of creativity and critical thinking. I had to consider how I could effectively communicate my points with just images, or mostly images. So I had to think about not just how I related to an image, but how other people would relate to that image, and then I had to decide if that would appropriately convey the point. So I arranged the display to reflect the ideas that underscored my thesis, which was I took three separate areas of Tolkien's life, and I kind of surrounded the center, and the center was a big gold ring with a still shot from Peter Jackson's adaptation, film adaptation of The Hobbit. And I titled the picture Binding It All Together, which is, of course, a reference to the sequel of The Hobbit, the Lord of the Rings. So my point was that The Hobbit is the book where these disparate areas of Tolkien's life coalesced, leading him to international fame as an author. So I really enjoyed presenting the poster, and I ended up with a visually appealing display of the subject with carefully chosen pictures to represent my point. I got to talk about something I'm interested in, and even on a well-known topic, I learned something new. So I had to combine research skills, creativity, critical thinking, and public speaking skills into one project. It was really fun.
So if you can learn something and have fun at the same time, that's a plus.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Pauline, and...
Congratulations, Pauline.
I would now like to introduce to you Martha Gilchrist, who is a chemistry professor, and she is going to share something that's a little bit different about the process and the research that her students have done over the past two years.
I've been having students work on a project that's actually a continuing project. It's through the Course Chemistry 2389. And let me tell you a little bit about the process first, and then I'll tell you a little bit about the project. First of all, I have the students, at the very start of the class, learn literature searches in the primary chemical literature. So chemists who are doing research at research universities publish their findings, and my students will read the published reports of the chemistry professors at the research universities, graduate students and post-docs who are doing cutting-edge research. Then I have the students learn modern research techniques. They choose a paper that they're interested in and present it to the class, so they have to really understand what the chemists are doing. The advantage of this, they develop problem-solving skills, and my student Victoria will tell you a little bit more about that. Then when they get results, they have to analyze and interpret the results. I've been doing this with a particular project where we're investigating the fatty acid composition of butter, comparing butter from grass-fed cows to butter from corn-fed cows or just regular generic butter. And last semester, I had the students choose some papers and do some experiments that were necessary for the project to go forward. And this semester, I'm having my students build on that, and we're actually getting some results that we will present at the American Chemical Society meeting a week from Saturday. So what we'll be doing tomorrow is developing our presentation to present our research that we've been working on the past couple of semesters to a wider audience of chemists from all over the North Texas region. So that's very, very exciting. You see in the picture our gas chromatograph, and we're using that to separate out the different fatty acids in the butter. And my students this semester have figured out how to analyze the different fatty acids and figure out the composition. So it's a very, very exciting result. So I'd like to introduce now one of my students who's working on the project, Victoria Nguyen, and she'll tell you a little bit more about her experience.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Ms. Nguyen.
Hi. Okay, so I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what I've learned this semester. I signed up for the research course. I didn't really know what to expect. I was like, oh, TCC has research? What? So I thought I might as well try it, and I did, and it's very strange, like, not at all what I expected. It's definitely different than a normal classroom. Like, there's no set curriculum, you know? We decided at the beginning of semester what we wanted to do, and we developed a hypothesis, and we worked on experiments to prove this hypothesis that the organic butter is better for you than regular butter. And it really gave me, like, a good understanding of how to work in a team. My partner Mitzi is here, and we've worked together a lot this semester, and it's given me a great opportunity to get, like, really close to the faculty and to work with them and Ms. Gilchrist. She's awesome. It's really showed us, like, we've learned a lot, like trial and error, you know, things don't always work, how you think they're going to work, and it's disappointing, but when the results do come out and they're what you hoped for, it's awesome. And, yeah, as Ms. Gilchrist was saying, we get to present at a miniature meeting for the American Chemical Society, which is really exciting. Like, that's a big deal, that we have something to present there. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Victoria and Martha. I want to emphasize that it is highly unusual for a community college project to be presented at a conference for the American Chemical Society. So these students and their instructor have done an outstanding thing, and certainly we will have the TCC name right out there with those people. At this point in time, we would be very happy to entertain any questions that you have. And if we don't know the answers, we'll go do the research.
Well, you mentioned critical thinking several times. Does this have any application to our QEP?
Yes, it does. It does. Dr. Robinson may want to tell you how it ties in. It isn't a main part of the QEP, but it certainly has application to it. But at a much higher level, I might add, from what I've learned tonight.
Right. And that's something that I think across the district, that faculty are trying to develop through their QEP training and bringing into the classroom, and particularly on South Campus, that's what we're trying to do. So this is an emphasis that we are using, the cultivating scholar project, to help with our QEP.
Super. Great.
Thank you for asking that.
Other questions?
Comments from board? Dr. Morrison?
I want to compliment you on this endeavor and your accomplishments, and to encourage you to do more marketing and get more students involved so that more students know that TCC does in fact have research classes. It's a wonderful opportunity, and I would like to congratulate you and encourage you to take it to another level.
Thank you so much.
Carolyn, how do our students know that's a research class before they register?
I'm not sure that they know that. That's a well-kept secret. The faculty member works the project into their syllabus for the year, so it's not like it's something that's to the side. It's not something, it's part of the class. And so the students that have been in these classes, all of them say, this was such a learning experience for me. And learning the presentation skills, being able to speak in front of a group, many of our students have not had that experience. And it's amazing what happened in November of last year, and we will have our next big event in the fall of this, of 2015. It's really amazing.
Very good.
Another...
Can I answer the question? Because I can answer...
Sure. I can say a little bit more about your question. I can answer your question, Ms. Hadley, about the Chemistry 2389 is called Academic Cooperative, and it's actually a research course. So in the course description, that's what the course is for, is research. So there's Chemistry 2389 and also Biology 2389. So there's a biology course also, which is similar, except their scope is biology, and then for my class, it's chemistry.
So primarily, you get science majors in those courses?
Primarily, yes. The prerequisite is that they have to have taken a chemistry class before, and they don't actually have to be science majors. I believe Victoria and Mitzi are engineering majors, and my other student, another student who's in the class, is kind of undecided, but he's trying out to see if he likes chemistry research. So mainly, they're science-engled or exploring science majors.
Great. Well, congratulations to all of you, sponsors as well as students. This is really interesting stuff.
Yeah, let me just add that that is the only class where they sign up knowing they're going to do that type of research.
Very good.
So thank you so much.
Excuse me.
One more question, Dr. Robinson.
Well, Suzanne is saying we should get a picture, and I agree. And I was looking at Suzanne because I was saying, sounds like to me a great marketing challenge for academic recruitment to encourage more students to explore, because when you think of research, we might think of dull, but this sounds so exciting, and I think we have a wonderful opportunity here to encourage more students to become research savvy and hands-on.
I would remind you that they have some of their work outside in the hall on easels, if you have a chance to look at it. And the students have something that they would like to leave for, excuse me, the board and Chancellor Hadley, if you would indulge them just for a moment.
And while you're coming up here, just stay. Come behind the podium, and come on, faculty members and other students who have presented. Dr. Jordan, would you like to join your group?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow.
Now we can just get the registrars and straighten out on South Campus.
This is awesome.
So exciting.
Where's the poster? I was hoping you'd show us. Oh, it's outside. I think I saw Suzanne carrying it. It's huge, isn't it? Can you not bring it in? Is it too big to bring in?
Ready?
So since we have a virtual audience, is there a way, camera crew, that we can get pictures of the projects that are in the hallway so that the people at home can get a glimpse of that and that it's a part of the record of the meeting? I know the poster is out there. Is it too bulky and heavy to bring in?
I think if they put it in front of the screen, they'll probably...
Turn around, let us see.
You've got to hold it up so the board can see.
And then let everybody else take a look at it. Tolkien and essential fatty acids.
This is what they did last semester. We're creating a poster, but we haven't.
I see.
And that's what you're taking to the conference?
No.
No, something else?
We're going to go off, like, we're just continuing what they did. I'll turn them around, please.
Okay, turn around, show them.
Excellent.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan, and... Yes, Dr. ...
Come to the... Dr. Wilson, come to the...
Dr. Sharma was out coffeeing along with Iowa's when the photos were being taken, so I just wanted to let you know that she was here.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sharma.
All right, we'll move on now to board business, but always so wonderful to have those presentations to keep us apprised of all the wonderful things that are going on at the campuses, and we appreciate that. That makes the boring board business that follows more meaningful, so we appreciate all of you spending your evening with us. Item number five, board action items, starting with the approval of the minutes of the March 19th meeting. May I have a motion for that approval?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison with second, for Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda, two items, both policy changes, and for anyone who's new to our meetings and our processes, please know that we receive all of this material with background data and information several days prior to the meeting. So we have read and studied and are familiar with the information, and so if it looks like we're moving fairly quickly, we are, but hopefully we are familiar with the items that we're considering. So today, we have two consent agenda items, one having to do with policy changes to DEB Local and the other to policy changes to FI Local. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, a second.
Sir.
I think Mr. Heed, thank you, Mr. Carter. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Committee reports, audit, and finance. Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am. We did have a meeting. We really have covered three audits and two other topics. This may take a little longer than usual. One of the audits was on student club accounts. The simplest one, basically, it found not too many, not too much in the way of problems. One example of students selling things for too long, and another for selling so much that they actually owed sales tax. We determined that actually the policies that exist are appropriate to take care of that, we just didn't happen to do it in this particular case, so it's just a matter of making sure the student organization leaders know what's appropriate and what's not. The other, another item was purchasing cards. These are the credit cards that are issued to the things. We did find numerous problems in that. You, for example, are limited to maximum purchase of 500, maximum 1,000 a day, maximum four purchases, that sort of thing, and we found numerous variations from that. I think probably the main issue is that the rules may be a little bit too stringent, but there are so many, there were so many exceptions to it that clearly we're going to have to sort of redo the policy and probably raise the limits and also maybe make a second tier for certain levels of people and for others, because sometimes you just, you're not, people who would authorize you to make these purchases aren't, you know, aren't available. I guess we also looked at some vendor contracts. They looked at a random sample. They only found problems with a couple of them. One of them was our copier, Denitex. Basically, a number of issues involving sort of guestimates for the number of copies made as opposed to monitoring a couple or three other issues. Since then, the appropriate software has been installed on the equipment, and they obtained basically a refund on overages that is actually slightly more than our auditors found, so that seems to be taken care of. And there was, I think, Traegeman International? Tradesman International. Some people were paid less than was appropriate, some were paid more. Ended up being less than 500 bucks, and basically, we just have a little bit more, better supervisory supervision of those things, and so it doesn't seem to be a problem. And those were the three audits. Appreciate Nathan Ferguson for taking care of those. We also, not involving auditor, looked at the Hazelwood, which is the tuition for military veterans. Originally, it was intended only for veterans from Texas. There was a January court decision that's actually under appeal now that says you really have to do it for all veterans, and in some cases, they're children if the veteran has died. Basically, right about now, we have about 2.1 million bucks' worth of tuition that was actually... Probably should stress that this doesn't mean that we lose that money directly. We can adjust classes. And so far, the real loss is because those students who would have been attending and paying tuition simply won't be. And basically, our recommendation is that probably as we go forward with the budget that we consider some tuition recovery, probably about a buck a hour or a dollar and a half would recover that. That's unless you just want to eat it all. One of my, I used to say there's no such thing as a free lunch. And one of the professors here told me that they use, there's no such thing as a free puppy. And the same is true for Hazelwood. Again, we can look at that during the budget session, but I probably, if it was me, I would probably adjust the tuition about a dollar an hour to adjust for it. It's also possible that this will be overturned on appeal, but this, I found in my experience has been that these equal rights things rarely ever get appealed. So I expect that we'll probably, that appeal will fail. The other was, Mr. Greenhill took the leadership in looking at our investment policy. We really have no really problem whatsoever with what the staff is doing. Our main concern was that there's a very clear fiduciary responsibility that trustees have. And we basically have backtracked to 1995 to where the policy originally said and how it's evolved from then. I don't want to insult anybody, but basically, what amounts to is that there are a certain number of types of investment that we're allowed to make. And those investments have to have a certain level of security to them, a rating, if you will. And finally, you can only have a certain percentage of your investment portfolio in each one. And I think maybe I'll let Mr. Greenhill explain it, but basically, our recommendation is that we hire a one-time financial advisor to review that and see within the parameters of what's safe and acceptable and legal, if we can maximize. Do you have anything, Mr. Greenhill, you want to add?
Yes, I appreciate Nancy Chang in giving me the information and answering questions. Basically, the reason why we went through this drill is that I have concerns about the exercise of our duties. I think what I came out of the meeting with is an understanding that there's a great deal of improvement that we as members of the board can do to really exercise our authority to make policy. Our policy was adopted in 1995. It's still good, but as, okay, Carter said, we're going to recommend that we engage a financial advisor to just take a look at it to see if we're up to date since 1995, we pool our interests. Is there any sense in putting other kinds of funds in a higher risk level? Maybe, maybe not. But it's always, it's our job to take a look at it. But I do really appreciate Nancy Chang being in front of a lawyer answering questions. She did a very, very good job. Mark your next. I'm kidding.
We, by the way, if you haven't already received copies of the audits, I will send them to you. It's nice, my understanding as well, that all, the results of all internal audits have to be placed on our website. So they'll be available for anyone to peruse. I mean, some of them are fairly complex and multiple pages.
I think we ought to also emphasize that not only is an audit, it's just something that is taking care of business, but there's always a, something to make a change. There are recommendations that are made by the internal auditor to the, to the staff, and the staff agrees with it or disagrees with it, and they work it out and a solution is made. So it's, every, every one of those audits has a solution and an agreement as to how we can improve ourselves. So it's, it's a good thing, it's a win-win for everybody.
Two of the three have already been resolved. The pay card thing is, we're gonna have to talk about it some more and decide what our changes to policy are gonna be. Probably should have that by next, by next year. And that's about it, Madam President.
Any questions or comments from others? Mrs. Vandergrift is MIA.
Mrs. Vandergrift is MIA.
But you are prepared to report?
I'm a member of the IP committee, and our report will be discussed in closed session with possible action. Our meeting was held March 23rd, 2015. We had very inclusive and vigorous discussion along with staff input.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. And would you like to bring us up to date on the 50th anniversary jubilee?
It's my privilege to address the 50th anniversary celebration. To give you a brief update, I would like to say hats off to Dr. Joe McIntosh and his staff. Is Dr. McIntosh still here? Would you come, Dr. McIntosh, could you come to the front? And to say thank you for an outstanding kickoff event, which was a smashing success with President Shimon Perez here in March. If you would like to add 30 seconds or 45 seconds, I'd like you to do that.
Well, thank you. It was a great event. Thank you for those of you that could be here. It was a real honor. We felt that Tarrant County College and the Tarrant County College Foundation had to host President Shimon Perez. He truly is a world-renowned leader, one of the few remaining, I believe, a true statesman. And those that did have the opportunity to attend found that out. And it was a rare, a rare treat. And we truly believe it did serve to kick off the year of celebration in a very outstanding way. And we had a great group of sponsors that came out and supported this. And bottom line, some great funds were raised for student scholarships. And we do want to thank the college for allowing us to help celebrate the anniversary in such a great way. So, thank you, Dr. Morrison.
Well, we thank you. And I would estimate there are approximately 1,000 people there?
About 700.
It sounds good to me. You know, I'm a Texan, so, you know, we yeast things up.
Or as some folks like to say, ministerially speaking, it's not 1,000.
And, Dr. McIntosh, tell them about the gift you've left.
Well, yes, at each, each of you. We did make available a transcript of the remarks. Those that weren't there, Ambassador Tom Schiefer moderated a conversation with President Perez, asked him a series of questions, and he answered them. And it was just a delightful, about a 45-minute conversation. He did speak in a very thick accent, and so at times, it was a little difficult to maybe hear some of the nuance of some of his words. So we decided to make a transcript of that session. So we have that available to you at your place. And any others that might like to have a copy of that, we do have some copies available. But we did want to present that to you as kind of a memento of that occasion.
Thank you very much. And we were delighted to see Ambassador Schiefer, who of course is a former member of this board and a great friend of the college since its inception, because he was one of those young people out gathering signatures for the petition for the ballot. So we, it was a great way to begin it. Thank you so much. And we had a continuation of the celebrations on March 28th, when the campuses were open to showcase the offerings of the college to the community. And we had people go to every one of the campuses and to the TCC Opportunity Center to learn more about TCC and its programs. And there were all kinds of goodies and giveaways. And we have a few sample giveaways for, to show these. And this is upcoming. I think there's gonna be a duck decorating parade, and the community will be invited to purchase a duck for $5 that they can decorate. And you can't duplicate these two, but this just gives you a little bit of inspiration. So that's exciting. And you, the board members have souvenir bags. Can you hold the front of that up? I know the audience probably saw these. I think the students that attended the showcase received these backpacks that have the TCC logo, the 50th anniversary logo on them. And I also saw, but I didn't get one, a keychain. So throughout the year, there's gonna be lots of gifts and goodies coming out. Our team has been very active and very responsive to people's suggestions, so we're excited about that. And of course, planning is in full swing for the Panther Island Celebration on August 1st. And you'll see the map on the, in view, showing the potential layout. There's gonna be interactive presentations of programs from all the campuses. There'll be stage performances and activities for all ages. Also, the duck decorating parade. And so we're, one, all of you to put that on your calendar for August 1st. And we also know that the campuses are planning activities according to decades. I don't have a lot of information about that. I've heard a little tidbits, but I know there's gonna be a lot of excitement. And I know they'll tell us about those things in the days to come. So I really want to thank the staff who's continually working to move this forward with the very best results. And I know, I'm excited, and I know that all of you are. And I also understand that different faculty members are including this historical perspective in their classes, not only for now in the summer, but also for the fall. So we're excited about that, too. So thank all of you, and thank you, board members, for your support of our 50th celebration.
Mr. Carter, is your committee prepared to make a recommendation?
We would like to ask the board if they could authorize us to proceed with finding a financial advisor to make a recommendation, to review our investment policy and make recommendations to maximize our return within the legal parameters.
Okay, is that a motion from the committee, which requires no second? Are there, is there discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? So you might proceed, looking into the feasibility of that. Item number nine, consideration and approval of resolution declaring unopposed candidates elected and canceling an election in single-member districts two and three. Mr. Tom Carr.
Mr. Carr is here to bring us great news.
I brought you two-thirds of great news.
We're counting the other third already.
Right. According to statute, there, there's a period of time, a window of opportunity for individuals to apply, to become candidates for the office trustee. And two of your board members were fortunate enough to run unopposed. And so you have before you, Mr. Carter's got the proposed resolutions. There are two of them. One, the first one that we'll discuss, deals with declaring those positions elected, duly elected, and canceling the election for those districts in which those candidates are unopposed. And, Mr. Carter, I, I would ask you to read the resolution.
Very well. I'd like to make a motion declaring unopposed candidates elected and canceling elections in single-member districts two and three. Motion is, whereas the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees has ordered trustee election to take place on May 9th, 2015, for trustees to be elected from the single-member districts one, two, and three. And whereas the Board of Trustees has pursuant to state law received a certification of unopposed status regarding single-member district two and three, which provides that candidates of those offices are unopposed. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District one, that Conrad Heed, being the unopposed candidate for single-member district number two, is hereby declared elected to that office. And two, that Kristen Vandergriff, being the unopposed candidate for single-member district three, is hereby declared elected to that office. And three, as the Tarrant County College District trustee election ordered for May 9th, 2015, for single-member districts numbers two and three are hereby canceled. And four, that a copy of this order shall be posted on May 9th, 2015, Election Day, at each polling place that has been using this election. Be it further ordered that Conrad Heed and Kristen Vandergriff, newly-elected trustees, shall be issued their certificates of election and take the oath of office as prescribed by law.
Motion to approve. Second, Dr. Greenhill, Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great. Congratulations, board members. You also have before you a resolution, basically, kind of a cleanup deal here. This board, back in January, adopted a resolution to call the election for all three single-member districts. You've now canceled the election in two of the three districts. So there's a resolution before you to amend that order of election and modify it so that we only conduct an election in single-member district one. And I would move for its approval by the board. And, Mr. Carter?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to have a resolution ordered to amend the order of elections. Whereon January 15th, 2015, the Board of Trustees ordered election on May 9th, 2015, for the purpose of electing a trustee to represent single-member districts place one, six-year term until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. Place two, a six-year term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. And place three, a six-year term or until a successor has been duly elected and qualified. And whereas this board has adopted an order declaring the unopposed candidates to single-member district number two and three elected and canceling the election in districts number two and three, be it resolved in order by the Board of Trustees of the Tarrant County College District, that in accordance with the general laws of the legislature of the state of Texas pertaining to the election of trustees, the board does hereby amend its prior order of election by declaring an election for trustee to single-member district number one only for the May 9th, 2015, Tarrant County College District trustee election, any runoff if necessary. A copy of the amended order of election is adopted by this board is attached and made a part of this resolution and order.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
You have. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Item number 11, consideration and approval of resolution of the Criminal Justice Department of the Governor's Office confirming approval to submit an application for funding a violent crimes against women criminal justice training project. Mr. Gates?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is a matter that otherwise would not come before the board based on the amount of the commitment on the part of the college. But this is a requirement that we must submit to the Governor's Criminal Justice Division regarding our commitment to meet a 35% required match for a grant that we're gonna use to hold TCC Victim Services Certification Training Project. Trustee Carter has the resolution. I would ask for your reading of it and consideration for approval.
Whereas the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees finds that the best interest of the citizens of Tarrant County and the TCC Victim Services Certification Program, Training Program, be operated from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2016. And whereas the Tarrant County, Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees agrees to provide applicable mailing, applicable mailing matching funds for the said project required by the Criminal Justice Division and the Governor's Office grant application. And whereas the Tarrant County College Board, District Board of Trustees agrees that in event of loss or misuse of the Criminal Justice Division funds, the District County College District Board of Trustees assures that the funds will be returned to the Criminal Justice Division in full. Whereas the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees designates Chancellor Irma C. Johnson Hadley or her designated Associate Vice President, Vice Chancellor, Grants Development and Compliance, Jacqueline R. Mikey, as the grantee's authorized official. The authorized official is given the power to apply for, accept, reject, alter, or terminate the grant on behalf of the applicant agency. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Tarrant County College District Board of Trustees approve submission of the grant application to TCC Victim Services Certification Training Project to the Office of Governor, Criminal Justice Division.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Dr. Morrison, any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Do you type as fast as you read? That's a real skill.
Probably, actually, yes. Probably a little clearer, too.
That's all right. We get it. Okay. Item number 12, Tarrant County College Police Department, 2014 Annual Traffic Contact Report.
Where's the chief?
The chief is out of town. We have the assistant chief back here tonight. Chancellor Hadley, Madam President, board members. This annual traffic report is more commonly known as a racial profiling report. Texas Code of Criminal Conduct requires that we report it to the governing board on an annual basis. It's for information only. No action will be required. And I'm gonna ask Assistant- And I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Dietrich to summarize it for you.
Oh, she's here, okay. How about you?
Chief Dietrich, welcome.
Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
Provided for your review and in compliance with the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure is the police department's racial profiling analysis for 2014. The Tarrant County College Police Department utilizes the University of North Texas Professional Development Institute to analyze data provided to them in reference to the race or ethnicity of individuals stopped, issued traffic citations, arrested for traffic violations, and searched resulting from that stop. The analysis for 2014 revealed the following: that we are in compliance related to the submission of the annual report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and the governing body of TCC, as well as all areas of Texas law relating to racial profiling; that we are also in compliance related to training and education regarding racial profiling; that we are in compliance related to educating the public on the complaint process; that we are in compliance related to collection of all racial profiling data; and there is no conclusive indications of systemic racial profiling within our department. A brief definition of racial profiling. It is defined as a law enforcement-initiated action based on an individual's race, ethnicity, or national origin, rather than on the individual's behavior or on information identifying the individual as having engaged in criminal activity. The TCC Police Department takes additional steps to prevent racial profiling within our agency. All our patrol units are equipped with mobile video cameras. All of our officers are equipped with body cameras. Footage from those cameras is routinely reviewed for any improprieties. The outcome of traffic stops is reviewed to ensure that there is no disparity in search or arrests of a specific race or ethnicity, and all racial profiling complaints are thoroughly investigated by our department. And a side note, in 2014, we had zero racial profiling complaints. The data collected and represented in the analysis focuses on two areas, the first being the race and ethnicity of students stopped for traffic violations compared to the race and ethnicity of the campus population. The second is a comparison of all drivers stopped for traffic violations compared to the demographics of the Tarrant County population. Are there any questions that I might be able to answer? No? Then I would like to take just a second and thank two people who put all this information together. And one of them is Lieutenant David Herndon. And the other is Melanie Gonzalez, who is an administrative assistant for the Northeast Campus Police Department, and she does incredible work. And these are two people who obsess over this information. So.
How long?
I'm sure it is. It's a good reading.
How long have we had body cameras?
This year. This is our first year to have them.
I was going to ask. I wasn't aware that they, that you had that.
Yes, sir. This is our first year. We're within the first six months of having them. And I believe we are well ahead of the curve.
No kidding.
For a police department. So, so thank you, Vice Chancellor Robinson, for allowing that.
But the work, the report reflects you and your officers, and we are appreciative and commend you for your good work.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you all.
And I might add Officer Dietrich. Nancy. Nancy Chang. I'm talking to Officer Dietrich. I just wanted to add our appreciation, too, for past years. Our police department has done an outstanding job of staying within the rules and regulations even before we had the body cameras. And occasionally, we have had complaints, as you know, from students or others who complained that we've done things that they consider to be not according to policy. And when that has happened, the department has thoroughly investigated, and if any wrongdoing was found, it was taken care of. So we really thank you for that. I continue to say that as large as we are at Tarrant County College District, serving over 100,000 different individuals every year, we have employees enough to make up most, more employees than most small cities in Texas, and we have very, very few complaints of that nature. So we applaud you for your great work.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to.
Chief Williams doesn't allow us to mess up. He said, "Don't be."
One more question.
I'd like to ask a question.
One more question.
In light of what's happening in the legislature regarding open carry, campus carry, et cetera, et cetera, are you making any, assuming that that gets passed? It looks like it might be. Is our police department making plans for that? Is it going to involve any extra effort on your part?
I can answer that. Actually, that law has passed in most states. So we're studying the other states, what their policies are. And we've sent out an all bulletin to other community colleges in Texas. And TCC is such a leader in its police department that the other community colleges in Texas are waiting to see what we do. So we're working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, now.
He knows making the 13.
Consideration and approval of job order contracting general contractor services agreement with Novu Construction and Technology to provide construction services for classrooms and common area for Northeast Campus Multipurpose Center Building for Collegiate Academy Program in the amount of $331,478.44. Ms. Petty?
Took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you for reading that. And yes, the, this month, we have five items. The first two are at the Northeast Campus, and this one is for our early college high school. It's the second phase. As you remember, we did the first phase, and we're now having to expand what we're doing there to get ready for more students. And we'll have seven additional classrooms and a multipurpose room. We are asking for approval of this contract. It is 100% MWBE, and it's for $331,478.44. And we'd appreciate you approving that so we can get some more kids in there.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14, also, Ms. Petty, consideration and approval of Texas Multiple-Awards Scheduled Cooperative Agreement with Simplex Grenell to provide equipment and installation of fire alarm system at Northeast Campus Technology and Arts Building in an amount not to exceed
That's right. And this is obviously a life safety issue, so we're hoping that you will approve this item. It's 25% MWBE participation on this item.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Second by Mr. Greenhill. Discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 15, consideration and approval of inter-local agreement with Texas A&amp;M University Engineering Experiment Stations to perform continuous commissioning services at Trinity River Campus in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Yeah, I might take a minute just to remind you, this is a continuation, third round of the work that we're doing with Texas A&amp;M. And I'd just point out, you get quite a bit of information in our board packets, especially on these next three items, which are all infrastructure-type work that we're doing. This is a third phase that we're doing. The first phase was an assessment that talked about, and it's in your summary packet, that this was going, the work that we're doing there is going to provide a $367,000 annual savings back to the college. And the third part that we're doing is to make the environments at Trinity River, improve the air quality, reduce energy consumption costs, and decrease maintenance repair requirements. This has been a very successful process that we're going through. We're right now annualized, we're looking at achieving 75% of the projected savings, and we're only 50% through the project. So that's great, and we're hoping that you will approve this $200,000 expenditure, and it's a not-to-exceed, so it could come in less than that.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, second.
Second.
Mr. Greenhill, any questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have just two ayes? Dr. Morrison?
No. See, because I made the motion, I don't have to vote. Because you can't vote against the motion that you made.
All right, so, motion passes. Mr. Carter?
I think I'm short of state.
Abstain. One abstention. Item number 16, consideration and approval of by-board cooperative agreement with Environmental Systems to provide equipment and installation to upgrade South Campus Building Automation System to Reliable Controls in an amount not to exceed $299,501.
Yes, this, the next two items, and this one is at South Campus, these all revolve around just upgrading really old systems, helping us be more energy-efficient and safer operations. And I'd just point out, on these infrastructure packets, I'm hoping that you're reading through this information, not only our summary, but our infrastructure team has put together a great project profile in the back of these, I hope that you're looking at, that particularly tell you how these projects affect either growth, or renewal, or efficiency, whether they're mandated. There's some really good information about this that they're giving in the back in these green pages in the back. Any questions about this item?
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed?
Second.
Mr. Carter?
What's that?
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number.
May I make a point?
Yes.
There are three key terms on all of these that we vote on. It says, "Staff recommends" to board. That is our protection. We depend on the staff's recommendation. And I just remind you that the board actually legally cannot vote on and pass these items without a staff recommendation, unless we seek outside independent legal information. So I just wanted to, she said she hopes we approve, but she really recommends, and that's in the written report, "Staff recommends approval."
Thank you.
So I just said that for the benefit of the audience, that they know we're doing this based on staff recommendations.
I do recommend it, and I hope you approve it.
Item number 17, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Refrigeration for upgrades to South Campus Central Utilities Plant in an amount not to exceed $897,804.68.
This was a competitive sealed bid. This is very important for the South Campus and supporting the Energy Technology Center and our early college high school buildings, in addition to just upgrading old infrastructure there. And we would recommend that you approve this.
Motion to approve. Mr. Carter, second by Mr. Heed. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your approval.
Thank you. Item number 18, Mr. Marshall, consideration and approval of purchase of server hardware from NetSync Network Solutions in the amount of $286,310.41.
This is part of a refresh cycle of our network server equipment in the data center. This is 16 physical servers, and they are replacing 16 old ones, and we're going to be hosting upwards of 200 applications on these servers. The nice thing about the upgrade is that these are half the size and consume half the energy that the predecessor equipment generates. We are not totally removing the older equipment. Right now, that equipment is in support of critical applications. We're going to take the older equipment out of the critical use and use it over in our disaster recovery center and do some low-end storage of information over there. So the equipment that we're replacing actually still has a use, but it's not, no longer under maintenance, and we, without good, you know, my advice is to, if it's not under maintenance, you don't put critical things on top of it. So the vendor will not maintain this, the older equipment anymore. The amount is in, the recommendation is to purchase the servers in the amount of $286,310.41, and this was a result of a purchase off of the DIR after a quote from multiple vendors.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Mr. Greenhill, any discussion?
I just wondered, how long typically do the vendors maintain these things, agree to maintain them?
It depends on the vendor. If you're talking server hardware, it's typically three years when you buy the equipment, and then we pay for additional two. It's kind of like buying a car. They'll give you so many years built into the original price, and then you can extend that. Once it gets beyond, well, in this case, Dell, they won't, they won't maintain it. You can't even buy additional support for it after five years. It all, but, you know, it depends on the equipment that you're purchasing. Some equipment is seven years, some equipment is five. It all, it just all depends on the type of equipment. In this case, five years is the limit that they'll maintain. And you're happy with that?
You have no choice.
You know, the equipment still works, but I would not put my payroll system on it, because if it breaks, I can't get a, I can't get an immediate response from the manufacturer. And then I'd have to go ahead and buy at a non-negotiable price to put a piece of equipment in at a time when you're in the middle of crisis. So I'm very happy with this.
I can't think of any industry that does a better job of planned obsolescence than the.
Sure, you're right.
Than the computer technology world.
They took good lessons off of Henry Ford.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second.
Second.
Dr. Morrison, any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration and approval of purchase of network performance analysis from True North Consulting Group in the amount of $141,840.
This is for a study of our entire network infrastructure. The design of the current network was done in 2003, and at that time, it was designed for the current operations of the district. We have added a number of campuses and locations, and actually, a number of different types of services with regards to the early college high schools. We think we're doing a really good job, but this is an industry best practice to have an expert take a look at your environment. We could hire an expert for basically the same amount of money, but it would be, you know, the person would do their job, and then we'd still have to pay him year after year for a service we really only need basically once a decade. And the people we would engage are the basic masters and doctors of computer science, and you engage them for about a half of a year timeframe to perform an analysis and provide recommendations for what they think our network can handle and should handle in the future.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Greenhill moves to approve. Dr. Morrison, seconded. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 20, consideration and approval of purchase of instrumentation and process control training system from Technical Laboratory Systems to the South Campus Energy Technology Center in the amount of $151,518. Mr. McLendon and Mr. Herndon.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor, Madam Chairman, trustees. We present with you the request for approval to purchase the instrumentation process of control training system for the South Campus Energy Technology Center currently under construction. We issued RFP 15-020 and received three responses. Those responses were evaluated by the evaluation team, consistent of members from electronics, engineering, manufacturing departments, and purchasing, using the criteria that was per, that was posted in the RFP. The response from the technical laboratory system was ranked the highest as best value. We recommend your approval of the purchase of the instrumentation for process control and training system from Technical Laboratory Systems in the amount of $151,518. If you have any further questions, Mr. Herndon would be happy to field it.
I have a question, Madam President, if I may. Is this the, this is the contractors in question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question. What is best overall proposal mean? I mean, exactly, are you talking about price? Are you talking about quality or a combination of all of them?
All of the above.
All of the above?
All of the above. Yes, sir. When we issue an RFP, we follow state statute, our Texas Education Code 403B, which stipulates that we look for a best value, and it actually lists potential evaluation criteria that you may use in doing so. Price is one of them. There are other considerations. Our MWBE consideration, for example, help us reach our goal of 20% is always generally in our evaluation criteria. The quality of the products, and other things listed in the specifications specifically. So when we do an RFP, it's always best value. Now, sometimes the best value is determined not to be the lowest bid. Sometimes it is. It just depends on, on the responses that we get. Let's see.
So this is the best proposal, not overall? I'm kind of.
Best overall proposal. Well, in the, using the evaluation criteria, the evaluation team reviewed the different criteria.
team reviewed the different criteria that we wanted to consider in this, and I can find those for you if you'd like me to. Find the right page here. Price being one of them, and we publish it in the RFP. We tell the vendors, this is how we're going to evaluate your, your response to the bid. And that being, price being weighted at 35% in this case, the quality of the goods and services, 10%. The extent the goods meet our, the district's specific needs is 10%. The impact, the ability for the district to meet our 20% goal for MWBE participation is 10%. Even down to where the goods and services are from a company that's in the state of Texas versus out of state of Texas, and that carries some weight. So, there's, there's several of those evaluation criteria. All of those things are considered. Now, when we put together specifications specifically for a project, those specifications are meant to be a minimum standard. In other words, this is, in order for us to consider your proposal, you've got to meet minimum standards. And that, and the specifications for the equipment, in this particular case, was that as well. We invite alternate proposals whenever we do an RFP, because quite frankly, we don't always know what other options are out there specific to our need. And in this particular case, the, we received three proposals. All of them bid different brands. They weren't all the same brand, but they all met our minimum specifications. In this particular case, and the reason that the evaluation committee scored the technical, technical laboratory systems proposal slightly higher was that not only did they submit a proposal that met specifications, they also submitted a proposal that added additional value to the department. Some examples of those things, for example, the warranty that was proposed by, by this particular company that's being recommended was for two years, whereas a warranty from the other vendors was for one. The, and I'm trying to take these off the top of my head. Another example was the equipment had, that was, with technical laboratories, has the capability of allowing up to 12 students to work on it simultaneously, whereas the proposals from the other vendors, I think it was a maximum of four at any one time. So, the evaluation committee looked at it and determined this particular adds more value than the other ones. Also, the difference in price at $150,000 between those was about $300. So, they felt like the additional value they got from that $300 put the vendor they recommended ahead in this particular case. So, that's, that's how they weighed it.
Dr. Morrison?
All that you said sounds good. However, I was wondering if we could operate from abundance of caution and refer this back to our staff, including our general counsel, to look at our best options?
Certainly.
And bring this back to us another time.
At this point, if not approved, we would start the process over of aspects and go back out to bid again.
That is my recommendation, and I would so move.
Should she let her see this?
Are you making a motion of that effect?
Yes.
To reopen the bid process?
Well, to refer to our staff for best option, and he's saying that that would be the recommendation, and I ask that our general counsel give a consult on that.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the motion is to return the recommendation to the appropriate officials within the district for reconsideration. Is there a second? Mr. Heed, discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hernan and Mr. McLendon.
Okay, heating, how do you put the next one?
Item number 21.
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration and approval and purchase of heating and air conditioning training equipment from Hampton Engineering for the South Campus Energy Technology Center in an amount not to exceed $871,869.
Okay. We request approval for heating and air conditioning training equipment. We issued RFP 15-019. We received two responses. Those responses were evaluated by the evaluation team members from both heating, air conditioning, refrigerating technology department, and purchasing, using the criteria posted in the RFP. The response from the Hampton Engineering Corp. was ranked the best value. We recommend your approval of the purchase of heating and air conditioning training equipment from Hampton Engineering Corp. in the amount of $871,869. If you have any other questions, Mr.?
Motion to approve. So moved. Dr. Morrison, second.
Second.
Mr. Carter, any discussion, questions?
Did you get any of the firms to offer to donate equipment?
I know the department was working with some firms, and they may have got some donations. I believe there's someone here, would you, I know they were working on, because they had a very long list of equipment needs, and they were trying to get donations for some of it, and those that they couldn't, we went out to bid for.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heed, we have actually received donations of a number of items, probably over $200,000 worth. But these specific items are actually, they're technical trainers, they're boards that are a safer option, that are actually training on live equipment. When our students come in for basic electricity, they'll work on these boards before actually going out and working on the real equipment. So, these are, I believe, have you toured our facility previously?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Some of the board has been through, on a couple of visits previously at the existing building, and our training equipment that we have, sorry, I can't think of how to describe this. There are boards that we will actually wire up and work with, live electricity, and that's what this type of equipment is.
Okay.
So, can I clarify that?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The motion is to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 22, consideration and approval of renewal of a contract with Texas Industrial Security to provide security services for Tarrant County College District in an amount not to exceed $554,100,000. This is Robinson.
In, for several years now, we've had 24/7 services to the Opportunity Center, and then when Alliance came onboard and we needed the same services, we took the opportunity to do another RFP to see if we could get a different deal or a better deal from another vendor. The same vendor that we've been using and been very happy with came back with the best proposal, broken down by area. The Opportunity Center, the amount is going to be the same that it's been for the last two years, approximately $130,000 a year. Alliance, the approximate amount is, and we don't have comparables, because this is our first year, will be not to exceed $350,000. Staff is recommending approval of this. And by the way, it's a one-year contract with the ability to renew for two more years.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second. Dr. Morrison, any questions, discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Monthly financial report, Mr. McLendon.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to look at the revenue. All right, we are, we analyze in the same pattern that we have been doing all along in the year. We are in month seven, so seven, that would be 5/12, so that would be about 58%. So, we are looking at items that would be greater than 70%. If we look at the revenue, it is, the revenue is above 70%, so it certainly surpasses our threshold. Okay? Now, we're going to look at our expenses. Let's go, keep going. All right, that's fine. Just stop there for a second, please. Okay, our expenses. Individual expenses may be higher than 70% because of the following encumbrances. We've gone over each one of those. We have noticed no new ones. They cover more than one period. We have prepaid that cover more than one period. Or, we have paid for a calendar versus a fiscal year, so it'll show better. Our overall expenses are 59.5% versus 58%. So, they're definitely within the threshold, even if you consider the prepaid. So, our expenses are within the target that we would like. Okay? All right, so we're going to talk about our investments. Okay? Our pool investments, our beginning balance is $150 million. We utilize, the district utilized $25 million, and our ending balance is $124 million. If we look at our U.S. Agency Securities, our beginning balance is $140 million. We purchased a $10 million security from the Federal Loan Home Bank at a rate of 1.56%. Our ending balance is going to be $150 million. Our total portfolio balance is $304 million, and our total yield is 0.67%. Questions? Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. McLendon, and we'll move into the Chancellor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, it seems that every month when we come, we have somebody who is either new or completely recycled. We like both, new and recycled. And tonight, we have one of each. We have a recycled person, and we have a new person. Our recycle administrator is in Dr. Joy Gates Black area, and she is going to introduce Dr. Jade Bourne to you. Dr. Black?
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley. President Appleman, members of the board, I am pleased to introduce Dr. Jade Bourne as the new Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Success. Dr. Bourne is not new to TCC, as our chancellor said. He comes to this position after serving for two years as the Director of Advising and Counseling, Testing, and Disability Support Services at our South Campus. Dr. Bourne has over 28 years of higher education experience, and has served in several frontline and administrative positions at Lone Star College, Montgomery Campus, Houston Community College, Northeast and Northwest campuses, and Sam Houston State University. Dr. Bourne has also served as an instructor at Houston Community College, Lone Star College, at TCC, and at Texas Wesleyan University. Dr. Bourne has earned degrees from Sam Houston State University, a Bachelor of Arts, from Prairie View A&amp;M University, a Master of Arts, and Walden University, where he received his PhD. Jade is also a graduate of Harvard University's Higher Education Management Development Program, and Villanova University's Six Sigma Green Belt Certification Program. And he holds designations as a Licensed Counselor in Texas and a nationally certified counselor. Please join me in welcoming Jade to this position.
It's the first time I've been called recycled. I'll take it. Thank you. Mrs. Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board, it's an honor to be introduced to you for the second time. As you've seen in my biography, I'm not new. I was first brought to TCC by Dr. Fulkerson, where I served as a coordinator, and then promoted by Dr. Jordan. So, thank you both. I especially want to thank my current supervisor, Dr. Gates Black, for affording me this wonderful opportunity to continue serving students. Thank you.
We welcome you again. And we only recycle the best. We only recycle the best.
Thank you.
Dr. Morales, you have an introduction?
Good evening, Chancellor, Ms. Appleman, members of the board. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Kelvin Bentley as Vice President for Academic Affairs. Dr. Bentley comes to TCC from Lumen Learning, where he served as the Vice President for Faculty Development and Support. At Lumen, he worked closely with faculty to select open educational resources to replace expensive textbooks. Previously, Dr. Bentley was Associate Vice President for E-Learning and Innovation at Cuyahoga Community College in Cleveland, Ohio. Dr. Bentley has worked within academia and also in the private sector. Other previous positions include Vice President of Academic Excellence at Accadare, Senior Strategy Consultant Online at Blackboard, Director of Online Learning at Northampton Community College, among other administrative positions. He has served as a distance learning consultant for companies such as Blackboard and Eduventures. Dr. Bentley has over 14 years of experience as a faculty member, online learning administrator, and as a consultant. He earned his PhD from the University of Delaware, his bachelor's in psychology from Wayne State University, and his master's degree in clinical psychology from the University of Delaware. He initially served as an assistant professor in psychology for colleges and universities, where he gained valuable experience in online education, when he developed his first online courses back in 2001, while serving as the founding coordinator of Northwestern State University's first fully online bachelor's degree in psychology. Dr. Bentley's most recent honors include his election to participate in EduCos Breakthrough Models Academy in 2014. In addition, he served as a Fulbright Specialist in Distance Education in September 2010, where he offered faculty workshops on best practices in online course design, development, and facilitation at the University of Antioquia in Medellin. Dr. Bentley has varied interests. His professional interests include the present and the future of competency-based education, quality assurance in online education, learning analytics, and best practices in instructional design. His personal interests include spending time with his family, traveling, meeting new people, running and sampling different cuisines. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Kelvin Bentley to TCC Connect.
Welcome, Dr. Bentley.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome, well, I shouldn't say welcome. I am welcomed to be here. So, what can I say? After, again, that was very long, and so I apologize for the long bio. But Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board, campus presidents, it's great to be here. I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Morales and the TCC Connect team. I started on March 30th, and it's been great to meet everyone here. My family is here finally, so that's great. Our dog and cat, our kids. Hopefully, our belongings will be here by Mayflower moving truck tomorrow. That's the call that I received. So, we're really excited to be here. My wife is originally from Texas. Her family grew up just outside of Beaumont, Texas. I'm a Michigander, but I've lived, as Dr. Morales said, on the East Coast while I was going to Georgia School, finishing my doctorate. I've lived in Kansas and, and some other places. We're most recently coming from Oregon. So, we're just glad to be settled and to be amongst you, and looking forward to working with you. So, thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you, Dr. Bourne. Where is he? Thank you so much for agreeing to do one more thing for us. We appreciate it. I'll add to that Dr. Bourne was instrumental in helping us get our new advising system up and running. He did an absolutely great job along with his colleagues. That's called the advisement by appointment schedule. And now he's down here at the district office helping us do other things, so thank you. If you looked at your notebooks, you saw all kinds of accolades from all of the campuses, and they are absolutely wonderful. The only one I'm going to put up there tonight is Kelly, if you will find, that's the picture I'm looking for. Those are pictures of our students from each of our campuses who were invited by the foundation to attend the luncheon with President Shimon Perez. Those students enjoyed an opportunity of a lifetime. They were absolutely ecstatic about being able to be there, listen to that, and then to have an opportunity to meet President Perez after the program was over. Those of you who were there may have remembered something being said about students go to your next assignment. Nobody wanted to say what the next assignment was, because we didn't want people rushing, trying to get that picture made with the president. But, we have a good cross-section of students from all of our campuses. We have students in that, those pictures from the Chancellor's Emerging Leaders. Those are the students, as you know, who come to us needing a lot of extra help. We have Phi Theta campus... We have Phi Theta Chi campus students in there, most of whom come to us quite well-prepared. We have technical students, we have academic students. It's a wide variety. One of the things that we work on here all the time is that we have these wonderful opportunities such as this, such as the Salzburg Institute. We now work really hard to get a good cross-section of students who attend those, so I thought you might enjoy seeing that picture. Dr. Coppola picked my interest in this by putting his campus students in there, and so I called Shelley, as I normally do, at the last minute and say, can you find the other four campuses?[638.23][638.23](laughter) Because I know Dr. Coppola would love to share the spotlight (laughter) with his colleagues.[646.66][646.66](laughter) So that's my way of keeping them all honest, but they work very, very well together, and I knew he would not mind that. So Dr. McIntosh, again, we thank you and your team and the Foundation Board for those opportunities for our students. As you can see, President Perez looks very happy to be able to meet with those students. The only thing that I would tell you that I want to highlight on my recent activities report is something that happened on Monday, and that is the academic symposium that was held on academic preparation, retention, and completion at our Trinity River Campus. We had over a hundred, about a hundred and thirty-six, I believe, people who were there. They were from various aspects of the college. About half of that group was made up of faculty, and then, of course, we had administrators, we had senior-level administrators, all the Kelp members were there, along with the other directors and that. And we were talking about how we, as an institution, can help our students gain greater success from the beginning of their stay with us. Mr. Carter and Mr. Heed and I attended the Board of Trustees Institute, and you'll hear about what happened there later, but we always talk about meeting our students at the front door, and all of us know from experience and from research. And we found this out actually from research much more than we did experience, because I don't think we were paying that kind of attention to the students. But the research shows that if you don't touch a student during the first three weeks of his stay or her stay, you are very likely to lose that student before the semester is over. Well, that's pretty scary. And so one of the things that we have here, not just at Tarrant County College, but at community colleges all over the state and all over the country, is that we let students have pretty much a free run at deciding what they want to do when they come to us, and that would be fine if they knew. But very often, they really don't know, and the other reason it would be fine if they were prepared for what they want to do, and very often, they are not. And so this symposium on Monday was to have all of us put our thinking, our best thinking together to say, this is what we need to consider doing in order to help our students be successful. There were a lot of things that were discussed. I didn't intend for us to come to final decisions in one day. Of course, we couldn't do that. But we had breakout sessions where the employees chose the topic of their interest. We had brainstorming sessions with everybody in the room, and I think it went exceptionally well. Any faculty members want to add anything to that? Any of the JCC members want to say anything about it? Ms. Silverberg, President Silverberg, I should say, come to the microphone.
I want to compliment the Chancellor on an exceptional program. I've not heard a single negative comment, and I've been asking lots of people about the program. I thought it was wonderful, and everyone who attended is energized and excited and invigorated by the process that you've begun, and we're waiting for reports and the action teams to get started, and everybody is very excited about the opportunity to participate from the very beginning of new processes and the fact that you inquired our opinions and our interests and our desires about what might be best for our students and collected those and then created the breakout sessions from the ideas of the brainstorming and allowed people to follow their passions and to volunteer, and even more that you empowered people at the very end to say, what do we want to do, and to commit that to you, and to say, if you don't get called to assist with the team, you volunteer, we'll be looking for you. And that commitment from you and your leadership team to all of us made everyone feel that this is our process and that we're not looking for buy-in. We own this. We're making it, we're creating it, and we'll make it successful because it's ours.
Great, very good.
Thank you so much.
That's exactly what I like to hear.[933.43][933.43](laughter) Thank you, Ms. Silverberg. I'd also like to thank President Appleman. She is the liaison between the board and the administration on all things Achieving the Dream, and this symposium actually is one of the things that has come out of Achieving the Dream, and she was kind enough to join us and stay with us all day, so we thank you, Ms. Appleman, for that as well.[957.31][957.31](applause)
I will. You know, it's really a privilege and a pleasure to sit in the room and just absorb the terrific talent that is across our district, and I wholeheartedly endorse Karen Silverberg's comments. I felt a renewed energy, a renewed commitment, a very hopeful step-forward feeling in that room that day, and it only took, what, six or seven hours?[987.43][987.43](laughter) Thank you to the Chancellor for her leadership and for the executive team who were part of that planning and presenting.
The last thing I'll tell you, and this is a bragging note that comes from Communication and External Affairs. Some of you may know that we had people in Austin this week, on Monday, as a matter of fact, attending the Case District Four Conference in Austin, and our team brought home the Silver Award in the category of Best Print Ad at that conference. Across all categories, there were more than thirteen hundred submissions entered by universities and colleges throughout the state, and among numerous other schools and interests, TCC, they love, Suzanne loves to say this, "TCC bested UT Austin," which brought home...[1041.33][1041.33](laughter)
I love it.[1043.33][1043.33](laughter)
We're giving Mrs. Appleman a consolation pat.[1045.73][1045.73](laughter) "TCC bested UT Austin," which brought home the bronze award to earn this distinction, Mr. Greenhill. Did you get that too?
I'm hearing it all.
Okay, very good, very good.
That's great.
And then finally, some of you had an opportunity to make it to the Main Street Arts Festival. Shelley has some photos that she's going to put up at Main Street Arts Festival, so you might watch, you may find yourself. One of the most intriguing things about the Main Street Arts Festival for me, I went down there on Sunday to visit our booth, and of course, I knew we had two, one there at Main and Fourth, and the other one was at Main and Weatherford. So I go down to Wayne and Weatherford, and as soon as I got out of the car, I saw this big banner that said, "TCC," and I said, oh, we've got prime spot right here at the very end. So I go running up to the booth and saw nobody that I recognized.[1098.15][1098.15](laughter) Now, only did I not see anybody that I recognized, I saw nothing that I recognized in the booth, and so I said, is there anybody here from Tarrant County College? And they looked at me kind of puzzled, like, we're from Polytechnic High School. And I went to the next booth, we're from Pascal High School, went to the next booth. Well, Tarrant County College, I had not remembered this. Tarrant County College, last year, I believe, was the first year, we sponsor the Young Artist Exhibit Space, and we invite the high schools to come in, bring their art students, and let them work their magic with their art, and I believe they may even have some of it for sale, Suzanne, but that was absolute, but I didn't stop until I found our people.[1141.15][1141.15](laughter) I found my people there, but that was, it was a great celebration, and we want to thank Public Relations and Marketing, Suzanne and her staff, for actually keeping Tarrant County College on the map with all things TCC. After all, you know, we are the community's college, and when things like this are going on, we need to always make sure we're letting, getting the word out there. I talked to two or three people when I was down there on Sunday, and I'm always amazed what people don't know about us, but they don't. And so we really do have to stay on top of it to get the word out. So thank you, Mr. Gates, Ms. Cottrell, and all the other staff members for all the great work you did. Those are future TCC students over there on the right-hand side, those budding artists. That's all of my report, Madam President.
Okay, well, we have had some interesting, good PR, some great pullouts in some of the local papers. There was a great article in the Star Telegram recently about community colleges and the bargain that we are and what we provide. Is anyone from the Collegiate here? Come up here and tell us why we should be high-fiving, standing ovation, shout-out you. What happened to you all recently for the second year in a row? No?[1225.92][1225.92](laughter) You were named the best weekly?
Oh, the best weekly, not, it's called the best non-daily college newspaper in the country, oh, in the state, I'm sorry.
In the state.
From the Texas AP Managing Editors.
Wow.[1245.65][1245.65](applause)
And this is the second year that you've been recognized as such, and you also bested some of those grown-up universities in this.
Yes, we were up against UTA, actually, the Shorthorn.
Congratulations. Please take our congratulations back to your staff.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.[1270.01][1270.01](applause) Mr. Carter and Mr. Heed, you want to report to us about the...
Yeah. We attended the Board of Trustees Institute in Santa Fe. This is not only a learning experience, but a working experience. It's put on by the University of Texas, and it's for community college, it's for trustees, chancellors, and presidents who are part of the Achieving the Dream process. The working part of it comes in at the end when we actually bring back some ideas for the college, kind of a working plan. The first one that, of the four that we brought back is to establish an employment plan to bring equity among the faculty that reflects Tarrant County demographics. Students, research has shown that students like to know faculty and administration look like them, they make them feel a lot more comfortable, and they want the faculty to know that, they want the faculty to let them know that they care about them and their future success. Brian McElhenney was one of the moderators, and when he was at the community college in Denver, they actually installed this program. It took them about a decade to actually achieve the equity in the faculty, but as a result of that and some of their other efforts, they actually closed the gap, and so he feels like that is a very, very important part of this process. Most of the institute was about closing the gap, and so these other things relate to that as well. The second item is what the Chancellor just talked about, and that is to develop a plan to assist all students at the proverbial front door and help them select a field of study with automated processes to guide them to completion, thereby reducing the number of hours earned exceeding those required for certification or SOCHUS degree. I think the average is, what, ninety credit hours to achieve a sixty-credit-hour degree program, and to cut down on that would improve the situation or improve completion, for sure. And the second part of that is to give priority to scheduling courses that ensure on-time graduation. The third item is to amend board policy on office hours, requiring faculty to spend half of office hours in labs for their courses or in other appropriate places for student contact. And the purpose of this is that one-on-one contact is good, but a teacher, if they can engage five students or ten students, the impact is going to be a lot greater. So that's why we put that one in there. And the fourth one is actually a repeat from last year, and that's to establish strategies to ensure board members are engaged in and pay continuous attention to the student's success agenda, demonstrate support, and foster a culture of inquiry focused on institutional data, both cohort and disintegrated data. We like to see more of these presentations in our board meetings, so we know that the college is working on this and that we can monitor that and share in the success.
And Mr. Heed and Mr. Carter, Monday, our new Associate Vice President for Institutional Intelligence and, what's the rest of your position title? And research?
Dr. Reynolds.
Dr. Reynolds, Rosemary Reynolds, gave an excellent presentation on Monday with all this data. Mrs. Appleman asked me to have her come to the board meeting next time and give the board a Reader's Digest version of all of the data that she gave us. It was very, very helpful. I got a lot of reports from faculty members who said it was really good to see that kind of data and have it disaggregated the way it was, so. You mentioned, Mr. Heed, that this is a repeat, number four is a repeat from last year, and I think we have done a fair job of keeping you informed, but you, I think you're exactly right to bring it back this time, bring it forward, and let us put even more attention on the data so that you can really see what's happening, especially as you dig down in what you call the deep dives in the data, and look and see, and try to figure out why certain things are happening and why certain things are not happening.
Particularly the disaggregated data.
Yes, 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 sir. So I want you all to know that both of these trustees are deep divers.[1567.11][1567.11](laughter) They hung in there. Every session, we had lots of time together, just the three of us, to talk through things that were going on just at Tarrant County College. That's what the institute is designed to do. You come together as a group several times, and you look at statewide data, you look at some national data, and then you get together and look at your own, and so how do we fare? That was the main thing that we spent most of our time on. So I want to especially thank the two of you for being such deep divers and hanging in there, taking this very seriously.
I think these are, and Mr. Heed would agree, I think that these are recommendations that have significant policy implications for the board and also that require your full, I guess, interaction with everybody involved, so it's not like we can just jump and say, this is what's going to happen, going to be a lot of discussion and give and take on these things, because I don't think everybody will be thrilled with it.
Well, we'll work together on it.
That's exactly right.
Thank you both. And Mr. Greenhill, you asked for some time to update us on legislative matters.
I just thought I'd give you a brief update, just in case you're interested in what's going on in the legislature, because I don't think anybody really knows what's going on in the legislature, but in our, in the Senate, on April the fourteenth, the budgets came out. Community colleges got one point seventy-three billion. They do recognize the momentum points, and if you gain points, you will gain dollars. There is no, I'm not real sure what that means, hold harmless, there's no harm, hold harmless in the Senate budget.
It means that if you don't make your numbers, the state, the discussion was, if an institution did not make its numbers, then the state would like make you hold for a short time, and we see now there's no money in there for that.
There's no money.[1699.26][1699.26](laughter) Because several colleges will be affected severely because of that. Last year, community colleges received one point seven-six billion, and this is a fourteen percent decrease for us. In the House, we got about the same thing, one point seven-three-three billion, which is a two percent flat increase. Ninety-three percent hold harmless. They did not, however, address success points, so there is still some discussion on whether or not the legislature will renege on success points, but we'll have to find out. TEOG, our grants were funded, so that's my report.
Thank you. We will...
Another question.
Yes, sure.
So I want all of you to pat yourself on the back and say, I'm so lucky that I work for Irma Johnson Hadley.[1758.51][1758.51](laughter)
You'll never get them to say that.
She would never say that, and she's so modest. She receives many accolades, some of them she tells you about and other people some she does not, but I can't miss this opportunity to share an idea. This past weekend, see, she takes the community college to the community. She's done that all forty-seven years she's been here, so you all have a role model to follow, and I want to tell you that she received this year, yeah, this week, the highest
And I want to tell you that she received this year, yeah, this week, the highest honor that a national organization gives, which is the Soldier in a Truth Award. And you can Google it and look it up. It's only been given five times in Fort Worth, she's the fifth person to receive it. And it's headlining on the, this week's La Vida News. If you haven't heard about that paper, you need to Google it and, and read about it. But also, there's an up-and-coming college president who's following in her footsteps, Dr. Peter Jordan, received the distinguished service award because he's taken his New York accent out into the community. He's learning to say hi to y'all, and he's also opened the doors of the college to the community, as all the presidents do. So I just wanted to share that with you and, and to thank our chancellor for being such a wonderful role model to all of us. And congratulations, Peter.
All right, we will adjourn into a closed meeting, and we do anticipate action upon our return. If you want to hurry home and catch us on live stream, you can. Otherwise, you can just sit out here and wait on us. So deliberation, real property, section 551.072, Texas government code. Deliberation on personnel matters, section 551. I haven't adjourned the meeting. Deliberation on personnel matters, section 551.074, and consultation with attorneys, section 551.071, Texas government code. My understanding is our next meeting precedes graduation on May the 15th. It will actually be a workshop without business agenda, and graduation is at 6:00 PM. Stay tuned for any changes that might occur, and we are adjourned into a closed session. Thank you so much.
Who has the first motion?
Oh, Gwen.
It's eight fifty on April the sixteenth and I will reconvene the meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tarrant County College District. Dr. Morrison, you have a motion to present.
Yes, I move that the board authorize the chancellor to develop and issue a request for interest, that's an RFI, for use, development or lease of property located at Interstate Eight Twenty and Rainey Avenue in Fort Worth, Texas.
Sarah Second.
Second.
Mr. Greenhill, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Heed?
I'd like to make a motion that the board authorizes the chancellor to develop and issue a request for interest, use, development or lease of property located at fifteen hundred Houston Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six one oh two.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.